Mr. Given.
I see his name, but he just doesn't have his video on and there it is.
Just getting organized.
Hey, everybody is here this morning. I'd like to call the meeting to order at nine thirty. Is there any additions for today's agenda? Seeing as none, can I have somebody to approve today's agenda? Counselor McGrath, all in favor? None opposed, carried. The committee of the whole March ninth meeting were circulated. Is there any errors, omissions, or corrections? Seeing as them, can I have somebody to approve the minutes from the March night meeting? Counsel Wilson, thank you. All in favor? That is carried. Mr. Given, we have no presentations today. Do we have business arising from the March ninth meeting? Seeing as then we're moving along, policy and governance, council strategic priority update. That's a standing one on our agenda. Anybody has anything they want to contribute? Not been moving on. New business, supporting newcomer integration in Jasper. Mr. Given.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Keller MP. Ms. Riddell is here to present an update, an exciting update on some news from CFS and a new program that they were successful in, I believe, receiving some provincial support for. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Riddell to present this information report to council.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Welcome, Ms. Riddell.
Thank you, Counselor Keller MP and all of council. The information report you have in front of you summarizes a project we're excited to be taking on in January, community development, submitted an application to Alberta Labor and Immigration with a project entitled Supporting Newcomer Integration in Jasper. So the project essentially seeks to enhance some of our main information tools that we use in the community. So the website, the municipal website, the addition of a community calendar, and then as well the development of an app with the overarching goal of enhancing our community's capacity, including businesses, organizations, and service providers to connect newcomers with easy to use and welcoming information about their new community. It involves several partners and the project was informed both by the collaborative input from the Jasper Community Team as well as the Jasper Immigration Coalition and the Newcomer Network. It's the latest in a number of inclusion projects that the municipality has either undertaken or is currently undertaking, and I've listed a few of them there. The Measuring Municipal Inclusion Grant, the IRCC-funded Immigration Coalition and Newcomer Network, the Hello Jasper website, the IRCC-funded Cultural Kitchens Program, and that's also funded by the Municipality of Jasper in lieu of community dinners, and the Diverse Inclusive Together Video and Diversity Projects. This project is interesting in the sense that JCT and JIC members have identified for a long time that there's lots going on in the community and that we just need to do a little bit more to get that information to new folks to Jasper and in particularly to newcomers to Canada who are settling in Jasper. So partners throughout the project will include JCT, JIC, and Newcomer Network members. The project will span a two-year period and again, overall, just aiming to provide some some more robust tools for employers, service providers, and community members to support newcomers in Jasper. Total funding received is just over a quarter million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, and it will provide all of the funding necessary to complete this project in a two-year timeframe. It'll be run out of community development in really close collaboration as well with legislative services, of course, which is where communications is happening as well. I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Riddell. Thank you for your report. I find it great as a newcomer myself to Canada back thirty-seven years ago. I think this is great for all new people coming to Canada to have this support that wasn't there before. Any questions for Mrs. Riddell? Counselor McGrath.
Not a question, but a celebratory moment. Thank you so much, Lisa, for all of your work that you've put into this, and thank you to all of the people that surround you who contributed to this work. It's an absolute success to receive two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go towards supporting newcomers in Jasper, and I can't express enough how much improving our website and making an app so everything is super accessible and super inclusive is going to be so welcoming for newcomers of the future, and I'm very, very happy and very, very excited that you're here to share this with us today. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McGrath. Any other questions or comments from council? Mr. Given, do we just accept this for information or do you need anything else from council on this?
No, thanks, Deputy Mayor Keller MP. I think just as a matter of good practice, if council could acknowledge the report by making a motion to receive for information, I think that would be appropriate.
Can I have somebody to make that motion? Mayor Ireland, you make that motion that we receive this report for information?
I will, and I'll use the opportunity in making the motion to also direct some accolades toward Ms. Riddell and the Inclusion Committee. Council recently found to some dismay, I suppose, that Ms. Byrne will be leaving the organization, and that's a sad day for all of us, but I have to say that the ad that went out to look for a person who won't really be able to replace her is really an excellent ad, and that is in part because of the work of the Inclusion Committee. So this committee is engaged now. It's made some relevant changes. This current proposal is directed at newcomers, but already the Inclusion Committee is showing its value to the organization and particularly in terms of the new drafting of the information that goes out looking for replacement personnel. So just credit to Lisa and the entire Inclusion Committee for that. And I'm happy to make the motion to accept for information this report submitted by Ms. Riddell and the Inclusion Committee on behalf of the Community Development Manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. All in favor? None opposed? Thank you. That's carried. Thank you again, Ms. Riddell, and thank you to all the staff involved.
Thank you.
Eight pine two skateboard park relocation. Mr. Given.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Keller MP. Mr. Greathead is here to present the report. This is as a result of council's previous direction to bring forward something that would at least show to the community what the skate park might look like on the site. Oh, John, if it's okay with you, I'm going to share the document. Counsel, there was an updated image that was shared by the skate park designers, and if I, if it's okay with council and with you, Deputy Mayor, I'll share that while Mr. Greathead sort of discusses some of the action that administration has undertaken over the last little while with respect to this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Go ahead.
Good morning, council. Thank you very much for this. We had met with New Line Skate Parks and Daryl Savage of the Skate Park Committee on March fourth after providing maps back and forth and discussing the feasibility of this. And since then, it's become the, I guess, the preferred site for this skateboard park if it were to go, and this document here, the central image, is just the test fit. That's not designed. That's just a overlay exactly what was planned with a few added elements such as the entry and spectator seating from the original plan. So that's really the only modifications and changes. But right now, just bringing it forward for information, we did note the concerns that there being seniors home right in the proximity of the park. New Line said that they had dealt with that in similar communities and they were, you know, at first, there was a little bit of concern was raised, but then they were actually quite gladly welcomed into the area. So that was the input from the professionals. And so this is presented to you to let you know that we've been done a fair bit of tire kicking at this stage, and we'll be working towards this if this is council's wishes.
Thank you, Mr. Greathead. Questions for Mr. Greathead, Mr. Given? Seeing as there's no question, Mr. Given.
Deputy Mayor Keller MP, I was just going to ask. So this is presented for information to council. It is, we will ensure that the conceptual layout that I put on screen is posted to the municipal website, likely as a part of the council updates from committee today. But if council wished us to take any other specific actions to get this out in the community, it would be helpful if you gave us some sense of what those might be and maybe some direction. Or, as I say, you know, this can be out in the community site in this year. That would likely be in the 2022 year and subject to, you know, the success of the grant. So it is not necessarily a pressing issue, but it is, you know, available in the community now. If council would like to take some other actions to further the outreach on this, it'd be helpful if you sort of helped define the scope of that.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor Geno, then Counselor Demoda, then Counselor Butler.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thanks for the presentation. I'm a little disappointed in that I think that this is a case of we give them an inch, they take a yard. This is, looks like it's far larger than what it was. Of course, this is all conceptual, but you know, the space they're using is more than twice what they had before. I'm also concerned that they're not using enough of the natural landscape, which is the hill. There's only a small portion in there, and it seems to me a skateboard park needs slope, and you have a natural one. You should be taking advantage of that. Lastly, I had made a request that there be some space left for the possibility of another small outdoor surface, skating surface. I think that we should be looking at making a small surface that can be used year round. You can use it in the wintertime with ice in it, and there's a lot of kids play a lot of summer grass hockey, ball hockey, whatever you want to call it. If you made a small rink with high boards at the ends, let's say, you could get multi-use out of that. Again, it would be centrally located, be next to another activity park. And I think that this, the way it's laid out, would exclude the possibility of having that done. And as you know, we don't have unlimited supply of land. Now we have to make the highest and best use, and I don't see that being maximized here with this project. Thank you.
Mr. Greathead, you want to do a follow-up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I can speak to Counselor General's questions, all those, all your concerns are already have been addressed, and they're still at the conceptual stage and in a thinking through stage. We're counseled to proceed with this skateboard park relocation. The existing skateboard park, we figure would be a natural winter surface for a skating area as well as there's an intent to do something at Robson, but maybe we could use the existing park for another alternate skating park, maybe more appropriate for a game of shinny that sort of activity. Again, this is just a test that we were, Mr. Given, the down the show and myself were there on behalf of administration on March fourth when we discussed it, when we discussed really using the hill. You know, there's that little clump of trees, you know, we're saying maybe design in and around that really encourage natural elements, and so we haven't got there to engage them enough to do the further design work and the final design work, right? This is, we're at this point just as a test fit. And as for encroaching on the land or expanding, that was something that was also encouraged for us to thinking maybe it could be sort of an intro area for the younger kids, five and six-year-olds on their scooters. You know, that's maybe not so aggressive. We just, it's dead land, the way it sits there, you know, it's not quite big enough for anything else. So that was just a conceptual, and that's why it was listed out as a possible expansion or, you know, a phase two approach or whatever. It was just a consideration. So everything's on the table. We're being, you know, we're listening, and, you know, we're being very considerate.
Thank you. Your comments are well noted. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Greathead. Counselor Demoda.
Well, that was a good follow-up, answered a few questions that I also had. So thank you very much. Well, I was actually, I know that Counselor Butler is up next, and I think my question was more directed at him, you know, in canvassing the area, and I was just wondering if this was brought up at the board level for Evergreens and whether that's been contemplated or, you know, discussed over in that area and what types of communication has the municipality had with Evergreens on, you know, the proposal of this project. So I guess both to you, Mr. Greathead, through Madam Chair and Counselor Butler.
Mr. Greathead.
Madam Chair, there is a public engagement process that we know we have to go through. We're looking at a 2022 build that would give us ample time to do the appropriate engagement. New Line or New Land Skate Parks does have extensive area in this, and we've already knocked around the idea, the discussions at level and consideration points that, you know, we have to make sure this is the fit for the community. You know, a few of us, you know, think this is great. Maybe we, maybe we're not looking at the full picture, and I think it's very important that we include, you know, a good portion of community engagement, and that's been discussed as well at the administration level.
Thank you, Mr. Greathead. Counselor Butler.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor. First of all, in response to what I think was partly a question toward me, no, this issue hasn't been brought up to the Evergreens Board, but nor do I expect it would have been certainly not before now. And honestly, I don't think it is the sort of issue that would like to come to the board unless administration of Evergreens felt that it was something that should be brought to the board's attention. So it hasn't, but I, it hasn't come to the Evergreens Board, but I certainly, as a member and chair of that board, had no expectation that it would have come to the board. So thanks very much, Mr. Greathead and Mr. Given for this report. I just wanted to say that I'm really pleased by it. I'm really happy to see that it looks like there might be a little base for. The skate park then was available in the other sites. To me, it's a great opportunity to provide a little bit more of a feature, you know, even a signature feature to that council. I'm really happy to see it here. I only have one question. That was under next steps. It suggests the council should direct administration to continue the design of the park, and I'm curious of what that means and what the boundaries are there because certainly until now, I've heard no conversation about the municipality being involved in the design, and I don't want us to overstep, and I'd just like some clarity around what is meant and intended in that phrase. Thanks.
Mr. Given.
Yeah, thanks very much, Counselor Butler. You're 100% correct. It is still the skate park committee that is driving the design. They are the users that are closest to the facility and closest to the demands of the sport. Administration is providing support to them and to New Line in terms of providing the technical documents and site information that they might need and assisting them with maybe from a municipal safety perspective, given that it would be on our lands. But to be clear, the design and the details of the park are up to those who are driving the project, driving the fundraising, and that is the skate park committee.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Follow-up?
Great. Thanks for that answer. I'm happy to hear that, and I do want to thank Greathead and his whole team. I know they've been really engaged on this, and support, I think, is what the skate park folks need, and I'm really glad to see us engaged in providing that support to make this a reality for the community. Thank you very much.
Counselor McGrath.
Thank you very much, Mr. Greathead and Mr. Given for including this report on our agenda today. I think it's really wonderful that we've engaged the skate park and the designers and that conceptually at this point, it is the preferred location. You know, it was just kind of a one-off in a council meeting, and then it's actually turned around and become something really beautiful and wonderful for the community. So I'm super happy to see this built into Centennial, into Centennial Park and have been seeking perspective of residents, haven't heard anything negative thus far. I also have tried to engage the JCT and have been talking about this at the school-aged community conversations, and so far, all I'm hearing is support for the project. So I'm really happy with having this here today and hopeful that this can continue and build momentum and that we can have our skate park built in 2022.
Thank you, Counselor McGrath. Counselor Wilson.
Not to be, not to rain on the parade, but I think a build of 2022 would mean that the municipality has to put some, like a budget allocation together for 2021. There's, we need to start assisting the skate park in this direction. If not, let's just hang it up. You know, it's 2022 is not going to happen unless there's designs being put together now. We're applying for permits now. We're putting it up to tender in six months from now. 2022 is going to come around pretty quickly, and if we don't take more steps forward, we'll be sitting on this next year as well. I think it's about time now that the municipality puts money towards this piece of property. It's, we, it looks like we have momentum here. If we're sitting around, if we're sitting waiting for a successful grant, most likely we'll be sitting waiting for a successful grant next year. I just want to ask, I guess, when would we find out about this grant and will it give us enough time to move forward for a 2020, 2022 build? Because 2022 build starts now in all of the stuff behind the scenes.
Mr. Given.
Yeah, Mr. Greathead might also have a perspective on the construction side, but I can say that I have personally reached out to the Skate Park Committee and Daryl just to ensure that he's able to, that we're providing the support necessary for him to be able to submit his application, finalize it. So we're doing what we can to support, you know, that community group in doing so. Council has, under their previous direction, given administration the go-ahead to incorporate funds up to, I believe it was three hundred thousand dollars to support the skate park. So that is in administration's budget for 2021 and 2022, so that is possible. The, I'm not aware of the announcement timelines with respect to the grant application that the committee will be putting in. And so that is, you know, we are working closely with them, so we will be aware of that, but I am not aware of it at this moment to be able to tell council with any certainty. But I guess, Counselor Wilson, to your question or your general sort of intent, administration is doing what we can to support this community group. Council has provided administration the direction to have funds available, which we have incorporated in the budget, and once we get any news on the grant, we would work with the committee to ensure that they started the development approval process as required, recognizing that those timelines can be long.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor wants to follow up, and then Counselor Demoda.
Yeah, just a follow-up question would be that I was, under my assumption or impression, that the three hundred thousand dollar allocation was pending the approval of the CFPAP grant. Is that, am I mistaken? I may be. Paul is shaking his head.
Yeah, Counselor Wilson, that's, that's correct. It was, there was a subject to. Council added that sort of clause to say that the municipal support was subject to the organizing committee to raise additional funds. And so if the organizing committee doesn't raise those additional funds, they would have a choice to make about how they wish to scope the project. They could choose to re-scope it to a smaller scale, but council has said that it would provide municipal support up to that amount, so it could be a lesser amount, depending on how much the group can raise from external sources. And I want to thank my team for sending a note that we do have the grant deadline of June 15th for grant applications and that we would likely hear by December 2021, given past experience. So it is a bit of a long timeline for that grant, but we are working as closely as we can with the committee to make sure that we're as well-informed as we can be.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor Demoda.
Well, Mr. Given has a quick access to information, so I was just going to provide from past experience. I've been working with the Skate Park Committee on the fundraising side, and yeah, so the deadline was, is for June 15th, and then the self-imposed, the provincial deadline for announcing the successful candidates is the end of December, and that's from past experience, but it could be announced before, but that's the, it can take up to those six months before the province announces the successful candidate. So hopefully it won't take that long, but Counselor Wilson's right. I mean, we, there's got to be some measures taken in advance of that. You know, I'd like to at least, before we start moving forward on a lot of things, is to get, is to have everything in place with the committee so that they will have a more successful application, and then after the 15th of June, as it is starting to do some more physical work on getting things done moving forward. But I think things are going in a positive direction, and congratulations to everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Demoda. Counselor Wilson, did I see your hand?
Yeah, I guess, sorry, just further to that, would it benefit administration if we allocate money not, it doesn't have to be three hundred thousand, but it could be some allocation to assist in design, permanent application, approval, you know, you get everything we can get ready to go. Once the, once the project is, or sorry, once the CFPAP grant is approved, then more money is released and we can charge ahead because if we're not, if the money's not there to even do any more design, then I think we're going to be caught sitting on our hands when we get the approval or when we get the the go-ahead from a grant if we do.
Mr. Greathead.
Madam Chair, I'm envisioning an allocation of forty to fifty thousand dollars to do the background work to make sure that we do, we give the designers some funding to make the proper incorporation into Centennial Park. There may be some background studies, and there's, there's one parcel's just intersecting another parcel, so we may have to work with parks on that. So I'm envisioning forty to fifty thousand dollars to make sure that we're not weak link in this and that we've got the steam behind it to make this project come to fruition.
Thank you, Mr. Greathead. Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller MP. If I may, with the greatest respect to Counselor Wilson, I don't think it is at all to be conceived that you are in any sense raining on anybody's parade, but I might take that from you. I think when we look at next steps in the report that we've been given by administration, the critical component for us now is to begin in a concerted way, some community engagement. We have talked about this. This is a significant piece of land in a very public space, and although as Counselor McGrath has indicated, she hasn't heard anything negative, but I must say that I But I must say that I cannot share that experience. Um, we are dealing with um, a very visible piece of land, a large piece of land. And I think that we should move quickly with some formalized um, community engagement. Otherwise, we run the risk of hearing after the fact. And if this goes ahead, this is a permanent installation. There is no opportunity for a pilot project when we're talking about $800,000 worth of concrete. Um, so I think that we owe it to the community to cover off those bases early. And I think we should proceed in in rapid order with um, a focused plan of community engagement. And just to settle the question, otherwise I fear that it may well come back to haunt us. And I, and I'm not speaking in any sense against the project. Um, but I think that for community benefit, we should engage with the community now and not limited to the seniors, although I think because they are across the road, it it would be appropriate to have that and not rely on um, past experience of New Line um, to say that, well, we have found in other communities that acceptance comes after the fact. I I would rather have this project um, welcomed before it arrives rather than accepted sometime afterwards. So my my comment is that with respect to next steps that were presented by administration, we direct administration to prepare a formalized plan of community engagement and then get on with it.
So Mayor Ireland, do I take that as your motion?
I am, I am prepared to make a motion. Um, I haven't got it worded very well, but um, the motion would be that um, council direct administration um, to plan for and begin um, community engagement with respect to both the site and um, if Counselor Wilson is interested in uh, pursuing other direct funding, then incorporate that into um, the community engagement piece. And I'm sure that that was almost incomprehensible and I apologize to to Ms. Byrne for fumbling along with that motion.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Counselor Demoda.
When the rumblings or like the background discussion started taking place about uh, ball diamond aid that that site, um, and I was talking with the uh, skate park uh, group, my fear was that, you know, this topic was coming up during an election year and I don't want to take anything away from the progress we're making and, you know, and I don't want to uh, have the assumption that I'm accusing counselors of anything um, negative. It's just, what I was, before this was even a a discussion piece, the discussion I was having is that I was afraid that this would start getting so much momentum that it would like get out of the hands of the skate park committee. Because when we were meeting, um, they had everything in place to get um, the information for the CFPAP application. And one thing that they didn't want was a lot of changes that would affect that application. And um, from my understanding, the application is in site specific. So I was on their side at that time in understanding that let's just stick with that program, see if the the application is successful and then explore the ball diamond A options so that we're not creating a a bigger kind of um, corruption to the process. And um, we still have time to do that public consultation after the fact. But I I think there's a lot of, a lot of balls rolling. There's a lot of things up in the air now that might be confusing the process. And um, I have a fear that um, there might be too much momentum, maybe going in the in in too many directions. So I don't want to say the wrong directions, but I have a fear that this could cause some problems. So I'm happy with the way things are moving and and the concepts are great, but I have a fear that, you know, maybe this is getting too big before it needs to be too big. And um, I'm more comfortable with sticking with 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 the skate park, sticking to the original plan and having its suc- successful, um, you know, um, being successful candidates and then looking at the the prospect of expanding um, the uh, the area and moving it if need be, if if that's what the community wants. So I I think we're we're getting a little ahead of it, but at the same time, you know, it could be a good thing, but I fear that it it might be a negative thing. Just thought I'd say that.
Thank you, Counselor Demoda. Mr. Given.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Keller-Herempe. Um, just, I want to make sure it it's come up a couple of times and and to be clear, uh, nothing administration showed today or that the skate park is considering at this time or that the in, you know, the designers have proposed would suggest that it's any bigger than the existing site. Uh, the rendering that I showed does suggest that there's at least the potential for future expansion if there was ever a desire to do so. So that, you know, is conceptual nature, but uh, this doesn't propose that the base skate park would take over any additional space than it was previously proposed on. Um, in terms of next steps, uh, you know, if if there was an interest from council uh, to ask administration to come back to committee of the whole with uh, a recommendation on an approach to community engagement, uh, that might be helpful. Uh, then we can ensure that uh, whatever engagement we do undertake is, you know, aligned with the scope that council was imagining, uh, rather than council directing us to go away and do community engagement and us not meeting, you know, the expectation in terms of uh, scope. I think that would be an important step. Uh, you know, if council imagines that we would have ten open houses and take out full page ads in the two and and so on and so on and so on. Um, that's one scope of engagement. If council imagined us putting it, yeah, you know, this picture that I showed today in the utility billings and uh, putting a survey monkey out for people to give their opinions, that's an entirely different scope. And so just so that we don't miss uh, expectations by not having clear communication between council and administration, uh, an approach might be for you to ask us to come back with a recommended scope and you could judge whether that meets the needs of the community and your expectations.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor Butler.
Thanks very much. We're just going over old ground. Um, we have a motion made and passed that we approve the funds up to $300,000 in matching funding, subject to matching funds from external sources. So on the question of how the funds are to be allocated, we've already dealt with that. It doesn't mean we can't change our mind, but I think that we were clear on that. We were also clear that we resolved to consider allocating a portion of land in Diamond A. We haven't made the decision. The recommended or the motion was to consider. And then I'm looking at a um, minutes from the February 9th regular meeting, which says that with respect to the motion to consider allocating Diamond A, administration is expecting to return on March 23rd, committee of the whole, which is today, with a report recommending public engagement options. So we've seen a report about what the notional sites might look like, but we haven't seen the public relation piece. Uh, we were to receive recommendations on public engagement. I don't know that we asked it in a motion, so maybe uh, the motion that Mayor Ireland suggested is is worthy. But I think the conversation isn't that complicated. Let's have administration come back in a couple of weeks, present some options for a public engagement program. That's our, I would hope is becoming our usual routine. And we can move forward with the conversation. We have made no commitments and we won't do so without public engagement. So let's just do what we've already said we're going to do, look at some public engagement options and move it forward. So I suggest that we um, advance with Mayor Ireland's motion, which really only confirms past decisions that we've made.
You're good with that, Mayor Ireland?
I am, yes. Uh, thank you. Although I I did see, um, because I was directed to the chat um, option that there was a uh, a proposed written motion based on my garbled verbal motion, but it had a date uh, that administration returned with a um, a community engagement plan by June 15th. If if that is a timeline that uh, administration requires, I'd like that, but in my view, sooner would be better if that can be achieved. Um, I think Counselor Butler just spoke to a few weeks. Um, I I would certainly like to get on with this earlier than later, if that's possible, but I I leave that somewhat to Mr. Given and I see he has his hand up.
Mr. Given.
Yeah, thanks very much, uh, Deputy Mayor Keller-Herempe. Uh, yeah, you know, we are um, flexible. I think, uh, you know, the intent of the report would be to provide a, you know, a recommended scope and maybe some alternate scopes. And council could uh, give us some traction on what they want us to go forward with. I think uh, the June 15th date was simply the date where the application is going in, uh, recognizing that it is not site specific. Um, and uh, not likely to start construction this year. We do have some time. Um, so I, you know, would leave it to council to identify what an appropriate timeline for return back to community of the whole would be. Uh, that was just sort of recommended based on the uh, the fact that the application was to go in on June 15th.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Uh, Counselor Demoda.
Yeah, and I just wanted to to make one small clarification on the comments that I made as far as the scale of this thing. And and when I said I, I, one of my apprehensions was, um, you know, it becoming too big. I wasn't talking about the physical size. I was talking about, you know, all the uh, the hype around it. So anyway, please forgive my confusion.
Thank you. Any other debate before I call to question? Mr. Given.
Not debate, just seeking additional clarity, uh, to be certain. So is is council specifying uh, for us what your expectations are for turnaround time? Or is it open ended?
Mayor Ireland.
Might I suggest to give some latitude that council direct administration to return with a public engagement plan, not later than um, the first of June?
That would work for administration.
Counselor Butler, then Counselor Geno.
Thanks very much. Uh, I have to say, I I'm I'm still a little um, confused or nonplussed perhaps is the word um, about this very long timeframe. It was on February 9th that administration told us, and I don't mean to put administration on the spot, but that administration told us that administration would return with some recommendations on public engagement options today. And I, there's lots to do. That hasn't happened. That's no problem, but I think our our implicit understanding is that we were um, going to be doing that in the near term. So I would hope that all we're looking for is recommendations to begin a public engagement process, not that we would see results of a public engagement process. And it seems to me that because the conversation and certainly by now, after today's meeting, the conversation, conversation will be very alive in the community, that we really should be able to move forward fairly soon with at least some recommendations for what the public engagement um, options, options would be. So I I hope we can do better than a June timeframe. And if it puts administration on the spot, I I'd like to hear it, but I assume, assumed from the reports we were received previously that we were able to expect a fairly um, early timeframe on that.
Mr. Greathead.
Madam Chair, if I can just comment, um, for the community engagement plan, um, we needed to to define and we needed to do some background steps, um, even just site uh, test fit, have the discussions onsite with Daryl um, and with uh, New Line Skate Parks to make sure that this is even a feasible idea. And really, I I looked at this as the first part of the um, community engagement is to uh, just get the design out there, get and see if the test fit works. Uh, we were only a- actually able to get this information gathered together on Friday. That's why I didn't actually make the agenda package, the screen we shared today. And um, my thought process too is come to council and see if this is dead in the water before it even happens. Um, you know, so that was my first part of community engagement. We've also had the discussions internally again with admin on how we're going to um, engage this. And we noted that we were also uh, relying on New Line's uh, skate parks expertise going forward and into community engagement. So that's kind of where we're at with this. So again, um, you know, with the, for the confusion. Um, but by the time we could coordinate the events and and make sure it was feasible, this is where we're at right now. And I think we can actually get our plan back together in a very short order.
Thank you, Mr. Greathead. Counselor Geno. Mr. Given. For administration, then I'm hearing that you would like to come back to us by June 1 with recommendations. Some members of council would like it before, but we have to take into consideration um, the work on administration and on Mr. Greathead's comments. Um, is council satisfied that it will come back June 1 or before at the discretion of administration? So I'm going to call the motion that Mayor Ireland made. All in favor? Any opposed? Two opposed. It's carried. Any further discussion? Counselor Demoda.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear that uh, you know, I I really appreciated what Mr. Greathead had just uh, said about his follow up response to the discussion and that's why I voted uh, not in favor and and um, I, there needed to be some more clarity around it for me, but I'm I'm okay with progress. I just, it didn't make sense to me at the time.
On to eight point three, traffic control measures. Mr. Given.
Oh, very brief introduction. Mr. Greathead is here uh, to go through the technical aspects. Uh, this was a request from council. Uh, John and his team have investigated the sites and has some recommendations for council's consideration. Uh, over to John.
Morning again, Madam Chair. Um, we've had a couple of uh, requests for that intersection uh, for the crosswalk to be protected um, due to the sweeping angles of it and uh, it just, the thirty kilometer, there's a thirty kilometer zone that just ends if you're traveling westward. Cars naturally accelerate. It's got the sweeping uh, sightlines. So we're proposing that it doesn't come, um, if we were to put one in, it wouldn't come directly off the point of the intersection. Um, it would be uh, recessed about five meters back uh, for safety. And I also think that um, the angle of the um, street proceeding, um, it's greater than ninety degrees. So that's a larger shoulder turn. Um, you know, it's reduced awareness for the, for the drivers. So administration's recommending that were we to put in a um, pedestrian crosswalk in there, we would need to protect it and fortify it with the um, uh, rapidly flashing rectangular beacons. Um, and they uh, they draw awareness, they have a strobe effect, uh, they're solar operated um, and have a touch uh, they communicate with radio waves between the two pedestals. So one um, one post gets um, activated, both signal, um, there's a timer in there. Uh, I've used them previously in other communities, namely in Fox Creek to great success. Um, so they uh, that would be the recommendation, uh, if we were to put a um, crosswalk in there. And we uh, figured that it would come at a cost of uh, about thirty. Sorry, I don't have my report in front of me here. I can't do both. Um, just over $30,000 for that. And then um, another item that is um, marries up to this one, it's same sort of concern is the traffic at the school. The RCMP have been asked to show a presence, um, as well as um, our peace officers have been asked to show a presence during the drop off hours of the school, um, especially in the winter when it's dark. And um, there's that burst of activity and crossings and. there's that burst of activity and crossings and, and people trying to get through. So as a traffic calming measure, it was discussed with RCMP within their own staff. The best permanent low maintenance fixture would be to install a three way stop at the intersection as indicated on the attached map. And we would like to install that and that would reduce the requirement for the RCMP and our peace officers to attend daily.
Thank you, Mr. Greathead. Questions for Mr. Greathead or Mr. Given on the report? It was very well laid out, I have to say. Council McGrath.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Keller-Empe. And thank you very much to Mr. Greathead and your team for bringing this forward. I am really happy to see that you have seen this through and have heard the residents of Jasper. On behalf of the residents of Jasper, you know, that live on the east end and the west end of town, our residents are certainly needing more safety measures along these areas and more safety is, is never going to be an issue or a bad idea. So both for the residents that are senior and for the littlest residents of Jasper, this is a great idea. And I'm super happy to see this come forward. I have had residents say thirty two thousand dollars, but you know, thirty two thousand dollars in, in the operation of a municipality is, is a small drop in the bucket. And I think that these two areas that I've experienced personally and have witnessed others have difficulties within the community would be supported by Jasper as a whole.
Thank you, Council McGrath. Counselor Wilson.
I'm in support of this, this, both of these, but, but I do want to talk about the intersection on Bonhom a little bit more. I, I believe that from Centennial Park all the way down to Stone Mountain, this speed should be reduced to thirty kilometers an hour. It's a high density population all the way along. If we slow traffic at this point with the rapid flashing beacon, once they pass that area going westward, they're going to accelerate into an even higher density population. The new co-ops have many young children. And then right into Cabin Creek and a fifty kilometer speed limit is, is unfortunately unacceptable. And it's broken up as we go. So if we go east from that intersection, you know, one block from there, it reduces to thirty kilometers for another block, a few blocks east and then ramps back up to fifty for a short period of time. So honestly, I, I am an advocate to reduce speed along all of Bonhom to thirty kilometers an hour. If we're talking about safety. I do, I do support this intersection on Bonhom as well, although I don't think it's enough, unfortunately. And we had this in front of us a couple of years ago and we were in the position to make this area safe as, as well as many other areas safe. Yet we didn't have the wherewithal to do so. So I, I do support this, but I, I don't think it's enough. Cars will accelerate all the way down to Cabin Creek and we have to reduce the speed all the way along. So we're going to be back. Council administrations will be back in front of us or, 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 or our community will be in our ear discussing more speed limiting restrictions in further, further west along Bonhom. So maybe this is the point to shed the light on, on speed reduction in that area. Not just through a crosswalk and, and flashing lights, but through speed reduction.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson. Counselor Demoda.
Well, first of all, I want to apologize to the rest of council for continually making comments on my disappointment for the disbandment of our traffic advisory committee because it was made up of, you know, agencies that had more expertise in this field than just council and anecdotal scenarios. But, you know, having said that, can we see some of the residents up at the, the, the top part of what I would call me at transferring from Bonhom that people do, there, there are community members and, and visitors that tend coming out of Cabin Creek that accelerate. And, you know, I'm glad that there's going to be some, some slowing measures and, and a flashing crosswalk in consideration there. And, and I'm with Counselor Wilson on, on his idea. And another thing that was discussed at the traffic advisory committee when we were discussing this whole area and speed limits in the community was another one at Birch Street. There are children that are making their way towards the direction of the schools and, you know, play areas that come from, you know, Tonkman turret area and in that direction to cross on Birch, which is that, that mid-street partway, you know, up the hill there where cars are accelerating and oftentimes, and there are a lot of close calls there. Again, anecdotally, residents in the area will tell you that I've seen it. It's almost happened to me a few times when I've been traveling in a vehicle when I don't see smaller people making their way. And not that I'm saying that I was speeding, even traveling at safer limits. Because of the way the intersections are aligned, that there are some precarious situations that occur there. So I would also like to see some consideration in the future of, you know, slowing of traffic and, and maybe an enhanced crosswalk in that area. It was discussed at, at, at that committee. And it was proposed to council at one time, and this was prior to Mr. Greathead getting here. He might have heard of it at the time. We also talked about having those flashing speed limit signs on that street at the top of my head as well. I'm not sure where that landed, but you know, maybe for, you know, a future council, future consideration. I think, you know, when we're talking about overall safety and, and kids making their way to school, that might be another area on top of what we're discussing already. So I just thought I'd bring that back into light. And I'm sorry for, for continuing on, but it's just, you know, a little historical information there.
Thank you, Counselor Demoda. So Mr. Given, this would be part of the twenty twenty one capital budget?
So the recommendation is that if council wishes to move forward with these, that you would refer this to the twenty twenty one budget discussion as a capital item. Administration could update the information that's being presented tomorrow. We weren't, you know, we didn't have an indication whether or not council would support this. There aren't currently funds in the twenty twenty one budget to undertake this work. And so if council wished to do so, we'd recommend that you refer this discussion to tomorrow's budget discussion. So we can work to incorporate it and present it in context of the overall budget.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor Butler and then Counselor McGrath.
Thanks very much. What I'm wondering is, because I see that an important part of the recommendation for the RFB is the fact that traffic is often accelerating there. I'm wondering if administration's recommendation around the RFBs would change if we followed Counselor Wilson's wishes and reduce the speed limit. So if the speed limit along that stretch was thirty, as it is already up to Meline Avenue going west and then it's fifty for a couple of blocks and as Counselor Wilson pointed out, fifty isn't really appropriate anyway, perhaps in Cabin, Cabin Creek West. If we drop the speed limit to thirty, would it change the recommendation? And my point would be, is it possible we'd be installing a thirty thousand dollar RFB? And then if we moved on and wanted to lower the speed limit, would we find that we had put in a fixture that wasn't really any longer required?
Mr. Greathead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The design of that road, it's very concerning. It's very tight. There's parking on both sides of the road. It's always pinch points. Any measure in that area, I think we could do to slow things down or at least make people aware if somebody's coming out behind a car in that area, regardless of the speed, I think the design of the road has its own inherent dangers. Where my yet comes up and it's got that sweeping curve. You know, depending on the turn, it's, it's more than a ninety degree angle. It's not a typical intersection. So there's a lot of competing factors in there. The option presented to council too with the RRFBs is that they're pole mounted, they're solar powered and they communicate through radio waves. So they are absolutely transportable. You just remove the pole and put it up at another spot. So they can be used for spot intersections. And the biggest thing is, is that they draw attention from the driver going through and it really increases the yielding rate of people. So if they, if those lights are going off, they're instantly aware. They're much more likely to yield. And that's, that, that is my concern where you have little ones crossing. We all have tall vehicles in, in Alberta here and they're hard to see it over and around. So you know, that was, I think the recommendation would always in that, in that intersection would always stay to have it fortified.
Thank you, Mr. Greathead. I agree with you. That intersection scares me. I'm always very careful. And I also agree with Counselor Wilson. When I drive down Cabin Creek, I do twenty. It's scary down there, especially coming by the co-ops, all the children. And I believe before we took over and put up new signage, that area in Cabin Creek was thirty kilometers an hour. And I agree with Counselor Wilson. I would like to see that area right through Bonhom by the school, go down to thirty. Even with this traffic calming measure, I think both are important. Council McGrath, sorry.
Yes, I agree, Deputy Mayor Keller-Empe, that we can't have too much safety measures being that we're sitting here in a public meeting acknowledging that we have a potentially dangerous area in our community. It's our due diligence to do this properly. So I believe from my perspective, we should make this motion today to refer this to tomorrow's budget committee meeting. And that we as council should also request that administration bring speed limits on Cabin Creek West and the west end of Bonhom forward at a very soon meeting so that we can tackle both issues that are equally as important. I will make the motion that committee of the whole refer thirty two thousand dollars for pedestrian safety improvements to the twenty twenty one budget discussions that will be held tomorrow.
Thank you, Council McGrath. Any further debate? All in favor? Any opposed? Great. Mr. Given, you have everything you need?
Yes, thank you. If council wished to have any follow up on the discussion around thirty kilometers an hour along Bonhom, perhaps some direction to us on that either to go ahead and reduce the speed limit? Or if council would wish to see more information before making that decision to direct us to come back with a report on that issue. It's, I appreciate there's been some discussion about it, but nobody's actually said, go ahead and do it. And so either you want us to reduce it tomorrow and we could do that. Or you would like some time to consider that and discuss with the community and maybe a background report for considering whether or not you wish to reduce the speed. Either of those are possible. We can support counseling either. You just need to tell us which one of the two you wish it to be.
Counselor Geno.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I didn't get a chance to speak. I wasn't sure on it, but I do want to add the following comments. I think Council McGrath says we, we can never have too many safety measures. And reducing speed is the biggest safety measure that you can introduce. But I, I would like us to consider an approach more from a culture point of view than signs here and signs there and so on and so forth. We have made some measures to try and reduce speed. I do a lot of walking and I watch traffic and really it's not that successful. If you want to reduce speed, you're going to have to have enforcement. And I know that that's a difficult area right now because of available resources. So I think that overall this town should take a cultural approach to, to, to the speed of vehicles for the entire town. Sign here, sign there, gets confusing, people get annoyed. And like Counselor Wilson mentioned, they do accelerate past the the speed limit sign. So I would like us to see more of, of, you know, Mr. Given has mentioned that you want us to reduce the speed limit, we would do it tomorrow. Well, I don't see that as being functioning. I think there's an education approach that needs to happen and certainly a cultural and mental thinking of our, mostly our residents that drive too fast.
Thank you, Counselor Geno. Counselor Demoda.
Well, you know what? I, I think Counselors, you know, touched on something that, that might be a really good idea and we've seen, excuse me, we've seen work in the, in success down in the past. On a completely different note, we had some issues with pedestrian traffic late night down Patricia Street and CFS through their social norms program created a campaign and continued on for a few years to, to reduce some of the vandalism and things that were happening on, on that stretch. On people making their way home from the downtown area after hours. And, and I think a similar approach might work in the community. You know, we, we have the resources available and, and I think that a social norms program for the greater community and reducing, you know, speeds and just being conscious about that in the community might help. I, I think it's a good step forward. And it, it might not, it could be a low hanging fruit for us. And that might be a good approach to take to start off and then we see how it goes. Anyway, just an idea. I'm, I'm not giving direction, but just throwing out to council for consideration and, and maybe, you know, if someone in administration has, has an idea how that could be approached, maybe we can make something of that there.
Well, in the past, this has been quite the topic of conversation both at council and within the community. But I think for the safety of the area we're talking about today, this is just my own opinion. I think that we should look at what Council McGrath has suggested concentrate there for now. And because if this comes back as a community wide, lower the speed, I don't think it's going to go anywhere. I think it's important that we keep the area in Cabin Creek, Cabin Creek West, Bonhom and deal with them section by section because when we looked last year as the community as a whole, it never proceeded because community members were divided, council was divided. And I think we all agree that Cabin Creek area, the school area is a lot of children, a lot of children, a lot of concentration in that area. And in my opinion, I totally support Counselor McGrath that we should lower the speed limits there and the sooner the better, in my opinion. Counselor Wilson?
Yeah, not to deter public, you know, sorry, what Counselors, you know, and Counselor Demoda were speaking to. I do support that, although we do know this area is a problem area. We, we've been speaking about it all term. I would like to make the motion that we were, we recommend to council that we reduce the speed limit to thirty kilometers from Bonhom Avenue, I think it is, all the way to Cabin Creek West and, and, and straight through to Stone Mountain. It's it's consistent. It's safe and it makes sense. And I don't really want to dwell on it too much longer. I think we should refer that to council, vote on it and, and step forward on, on, on one street that we know is an issue. And if we have to tackle all the problem areas one by one, I think we can do that. And then we might come out with the, the solution that we were trying to achieve two years ago, where we do reduce speed in, in areas that are, are at risk. And we, we leave the other streets that were kind of bones of contention to fifty and we, we move forward, but we know that this is a problem. And I think we shouldn't wait on this one much further. So long winded motion, but we can shorten that one up, I think.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson. Counselor Demoda.
Well, for a little bit of corporate history, and I don't want to put any pressure on administration or, or protective services, but I But I believe Mr. Jones might have some information on this already. There was a proposal when Mr. Osborne was still our director for bylaw. Or bylaw manager that came forward and it was a proposal to reduce the speed limit. Two thirty from the intersection at the Catholic church all the way down through Cabin Creek up back to Patricia Street along that thing. And, and I think where it fell apart was the discussion about piecemealing speed limits in the community. Because the, the new Cabin Creek residents that were going out there were complaining about speed limits on that street already. And why wouldn't it be thirty there as well? Because of, you know, young families that were starting out in the area and the traffic that was going on, on Patricia Street up towards Cabin Creek. So that's where it fell apart. You know, so there was a proposal and that proposal came with what's already in place around the school zones and the, the playing fields. In the community and that was to continue on. And council didn't go forward with that part, but there is a recommendation there. And it was from twenty fifteen at the latest twenty sixteen. So I don't know where that information is now, but there was a proposal. And you know, it, it's been going on that long. So here we are, how many years later, five, six years later, and we're still having that discussion. So I think it's important to move forward with this and, and you know, maybe not give it, pass it off to another council. Like, let's just take care of this, like councillor Wilson said.
There's a motion on the table by councillor Wilson. Is there any more debate discussion on that motion before I called question? Councillor Geno.
Just to clarify, so you mentioned Bonhom. Is that Bonhom in its entirety? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councillor Butler.
I'm sorry, I'm not clear on what the motion is. Could we have the motion read?
Yeah, to shorten it up, I would suggest that my motion would be to refer to council to that. Speed reductions be reduced to thirty kilometers on Bonhom in its entirety. The description would then be Stone Mountain to Bonhom Avenue. I think that's encapsulates it.
Councillor Butler.
It's, it's the last part that is leaving me unclear. I think we're talking about speed limit on Bonhom Street. I don't know what Bonhom Avenue means. I don't know.
Bonhom Ave is just the termination of Bonhom Street. So I think that would be, it's not.
Well, sorry, I, I'm not trying to be difficult. Bonhom Street runs from Cannot Drive all the way around until it essentially becomes Patricia Street. So I don't know if I, Bonhom Avenue, do we mean? Yeah, I'm just not clear.
It does turn, it does turn and I think on the maps it might, it might be referred to as Bonhom Avenue for two, for two short blocks. Which would be at hundred Patricia and hundred Geeky. But it could terminate at Bonhom Street. We could just clearly say that because Bonhom Avenue, whatever. But Bonhom Street, if it terminates at Patricia or at Cannot Street. Then that makes sense. We can just leave it like that. But I, I'm just, I was assuming that the map had Bonhom Ave on there.
Mr. Given, then councillor Demoda.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the drive to get some clarity. Councillor Wilson, you know, I can see how it would be confusing. I'm still learning the streets here. It does look as though Bonhom Street turns into what would otherwise be an avenue. It sort of curves around, but the name doesn't change. And so it's our only street that runs in that direction, I think. But in any case, if the intent was essentially, if I'm looking at the map and I, if this is not the intent, that's fine. If it was Bonhom from Geeky, at the intersection of Bonhom and Geeky. To, I'm not sure about exactly where you're intending it to terminate. But to where it turns into Cabin Creek Drive potentially?
Yeah, well, so yes, it is Bonhom Street on Google Maps. I'm looking at that as well. But that's a narrow street there as well, parking only on one side. So I would suggest all of Bonhom Street, even though it does terminate at Cannot. It is a narrow street there, parking only on one side. So there's only, so I would suggest that should be thirty kilometers anyway. So Bonhom Street. In its entirety terminating at. Well, tough to say because I would suggest that Cabin Creek Drive would, would in itself be. I, I would include Cabin Creek Drive, honestly, that's because Bonhom Street turns into Cabin Creek Drive at Cabin Creek. But I would suggest that Cabin Creek Drive is, is. If not the same, more congested than the Bonhom Street area. So I would, I would include cabins, Cabin Creek Drive in my motion.
So councillor Wilson, just to be clear, so we go all of Bonhom Street down Cabin Creek Drive, past Stone Mountain, right out onto Patricia Street, the junction there. Am I correct?
Yes.
Councillor Demoda.
I'm trying to risk not to sound like I'm pontificating, but this is the fourth time that we're going through this. And this is how it starts off all the time. And you know, it's the piecemealing thing, but I'm willing, if that, like, I'm willing to at least start somewhere. So I'm not going to throw any more wrenches into the works. If we can get at least one thing set in place and then the piecemealing comes down the road. Pardon the pun, I'm okay with that. But I was going to make a friendly amendment and just ask maybe direct administration to come back with something proper so that we can see it. We can look at it and then the public can see it and see what we're talking about exactly. So we know what, where we're starting at, what street, where we're ending. And maybe referring back to the information that came forward five years ago, six years ago. I'm sure Mr. Jones has it somewhere. So anyway, I would look more at council asking administration to come back to us so that we can make a decision on it. As I think that's the same thing, but it's, it's councillor Wilson's motion.
Councillor Wilson.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't like to delay on the motion. I think we can be clear now suggesting that Bonhom Street in its entirety, Cabinet Creek Drive in its entirety. To where it intersects Patricia Street be reduced to thirty kilometers an hour.
Any more debate on councillor Wilson's motion? Mayor Ireland.
Not so much debate, but again, just a level of clarity. I, I think I understand that the motion is simply to refer the question to council. And that would be presumably. Two weeks from now, because I think next week is a, is a non-council day. So that leaves administration a couple of weeks, I presume, to get something in order. And I'm simply going to suggest that part of that background. Might be a compilation of the various motions we have not passed with respect to this issue in the last few years. I think that would assist us all. And I'm happy to support that sort of emotion, understanding those timelines. I will simply add that from my perspective, and I think this is more relevant for tomorrow's discussion. Where we have just in the last motion referred. An amount to budget discussions. I will tomorrow ask for some comparison between that rapid, rectangular rapid flashing light proposal. And the relative cost of that compared to those flashing speed signs that are now in a few locations. Because picking up on councillor Jono's comments about enforcement. I think that there is something short of enforcement, which is sort of encourage compliance. And from my perspective, those flashing lights at, on, on light posts, whether it's thirty or fifty. Do wonders to gain compliance without enforcement. And so whether we're talking fifty kilometers per hour or thirty kilometers per hour. That objective signal back to a driver that you're exceeding, I think is a really effective tool. And when we're looking at speed limits, I would like to know the relative cost of those signs compared to the flashing cross rock signs. I, I don't need that today, but for tomorrow's discussion, if it's available, but I would certainly be interested. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland.
I'm chair. I, I believe Mr. Greathead can answer that question now with respect to the flashing speed signs. I guess I would just make the observation that the, you know, the difference between them is the ability for pedestrian to provide that notification that they're intending to cross. Which would be the additional benefit or functionality of the rapid flashing beacons. But Mr. Greathead does have those cost numbers.
Madam Chair, those radar signs ballpark at forty five hundred dollars apiece. We actually have four that we have already in-house, two at each end of Cannot and two near the school zone right now.
Thank you, Mr. Greathead. So I'm going to call the question. Councillor Wilson's motion to lower the speed limit from Bonhom at Geeky all the way down to Cabin Creek. To the junction of Cabin Creek and Patricia Street. All in favor? So Mr. Given will see that back on the agenda on April sixth.
Yes, and just to clarify what administration heard in that motion. We heard along Bonhom, the entirety of Bonhom Street, including the portion that turns into an avenue. And along the entirety of Cabin Creek Drive, and so that's what we'll return with. And in terms of a report, just, you know, so that council's aware, it won't come with an administrative recommendation per se. Because it is now your recommendation to council. But we will provide a bit of background documentation, you know, that we can find. To provide a little bit of a review of previous discussion around this issue. We may not go back in the annals, you know, for all of the relevant information, because I'm sure it has a long history. But we will gather some information to provide council when they review the recommendation that you have provided to yourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Given. And before we move on to eight point four paid parking, I'm going to call a ten minute break for everybody's comfort. And we will return at eleven oh two. Thank you. When called, the meeting back to order at eleven oh three. Paid parking, alternative scope options. And this came on front of council at the March nine committee of the whole, which is absence zone. So I am going to turn this over to Mr. Given.
Thanks very much Deputy Mayor Keller-Empey. So you're correct, this did come up at the March ninth meeting. Administration was directed to come forward council with revised project scopes. Focus primarily on the impacts of the downtown core cannot drive. We do have some alternatives that focus in on that. And you will see that the recommendation from administration is a slight revision to our previous recommendation. Still that we focus on alternative one of this report, which is presented as the Hazel RV and Cannot West off-street lots. With an increased focus on monitoring of on-street parking in other areas. Appreciating that we did hear that from council. I'll do, it is a bit of a lengthy report with numbers and tables and everything else. So I would imagine that council members have read through that. I will be brief in a bit of a summary of the differences between the three options. And maybe it would be worthwhile to focus a little bit towards the end on the table at the end of the report. Which we, from administration perspective, attempted to describe some of the pros and cons of each of the different alternatives. So the first alternative council is familiar with. I won't go into a lot of detail with it, except to say that in addition to our previous recommendation. We did have a discussion about the potential for increasing, increasing our monitoring of on-street parking in other areas. Without changing regulations around on-street parking in other areas. And so that's the distinction between the alternative one and alternative three, as I'll discuss in a second. But we appreciate that there would, there is an ongoing need in the community for more monitoring and enforcement of parking regulations throughout the community. And the addition to alternative one would be for us to increase the focus of that among our bylaw team through the course of the summer. You'll see in the description of alternative one that again, at a high level and recognizing that there are a number of unknowns. The overall potential return after expenses for alternative one would be about thirty one thousand, sorry, a hundred and thirty one thousand dollars to the municipality. And, and I will say that with all of these, we are making best guessed estimates. But we believe we've been relatively conservative, only imagining a forty two percent utilization rate in any of the scenarios. And again, that is just to account for the uncertainty that is inherent in something that you've never done before. Alternative two focuses, you know, I would characterize it as, as a more direct and, and larger. Expansion of paid parking in the highest priority areas. And appreciate that the, the definition of highest priority areas may differ from person to person. And so I will freely admit that, you know, this was my definition as a relative newcomer to Jasper and frequent visitor. The areas where I experienced the most, the most intensity of parking challenges. But I would also observe that it's justifiable, recognizing this is where the highest density of commercial use is in the community. You know, as we move along Patricia Street further to the east. We do have, you know, the, the large public open areas, a large parking lot on the, on the other side of the street. And so it is less dense with commercial use. And so that's why it wasn't defined here. This area does have a hundred and thirty four stalls in the areas marked in red in the diagram. And that includes two disabled stalls. We identify at a dollar per hour for those stalls. They have the potential to generate approximately a hundred and hundred thousand dollars. And the challenge with this is that the total expenses would have to increase as a result of increased staffing. Increased signage, given the number of locations that we'd have to deal with. And the signage and installation costs would have to increase as well. And so expenses would be up associated with this. They would come in at approximately a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, leaving this alternative at a, at a loss of sixteen thousand dollars. If the rate was at a dollar per hour. Administration's recommendation would be that if council wished to choose this alternative, the rate should be two dollars an hour. Which would increase the potential return to approximately eighty five thousand dollars. So, you know, the, I think, and again, we'll speak about this in the pros and cons of each alternative. I think one observation that I would make right up front is that from the beginning of this conversation, certainly during my time. Council has been very attuned to the concern about managing both the. Impact of shifting parking into residential areas. And the challenge of managing residents' access to areas where there is paid parking. And that intent of ensuring that we're achieving financial equity by ensuring that visitors are paying their fair share. And that taxpayers aren't impacted twice through their property taxes and then having to pay for parking. At this time, administration doesn't have a recommendation on how we would manage that for this season. So the impacts to residents on those two facets would be a challenge that would arise from alternative two. And I would suggest that a thoughtful approach to managing those impacts would. Be very challenging within the timelines of a pilot program for this summer. So we, you know, an approach might be to acknowledge that there will be challenges. And that the pilot would be an opportunity for us to learn exactly what those challenges are. So that we could revise heading into any future paid parking in this area. And sorry, I see councillor Demoda, I'm happy to take questions as we go through or at the end, either way. Go, go ahead councillor Demoda. I'm happy to take them now.
That's okay with you, Mrs. Chair. Thank you for that. I just want to know, as far as the process goes, what is? What would hinder us taking the presentations that were brought to us last year, I think around this time. From the, the various groups that we engaged to present to council as our RFPs. And we just say, let's pick one of these guys, get them to come and do the work and get something set up by May long weekend and let's run with it.
Sure, so, yeah, thanks councillor Demoda. So administration hasn't stopped moving forward with the. So administration hasn't stopped moving forward with the technical side of implementing a paid parking program for this year. Our Director of Finance and Administration has developed a request for proposals for a service provider. That request for proposals has been out and has been developed in such a way that allows us the flexibility to adjust the scope if council chooses one of these alternative options. So we can just pop that into the scope. So in terms of a service provider, we're okay to do that. It's really about defining what scope council wishes to go with. But the service provider discussion hasn't stopped, that's rolling forward, thanks to Ms. Mallon-Chuck and her team. So that's, that's underway. So, so I'll just move in briefly to alternative three. Alternative three, again, focuses on the two off-street lots, the Hazel RV lot and the cannot west lot. But the change here is, as discussed at last council meeting, to make the actual regulatory change to reduce the on-street parking in other areas from two hours down to one hour and down to four hours in all downtown parking lots that are not paid parking. So this, in this option, essentially has paid parking in the two lots previously discussed. And, you know, the additional, yeah, the addition would be that change in actual regulations that would apply everywhere else. So this model has the potential to generate the same revenue as our first recommendation, of course, and does have some slightly expanded expenses with an overall revenue potential after expenses of approximately a hundred and one thousand dollars. So, you know, that's, that's a quick summary and overview of the three different options. Essentially, the first is administration's previous recommendation and the acknowledgement that additional monitoring of on-street parking in other areas will be an important part of the success of the program. Alternative two is a focus on the most congested areas. And alternative two for it to be financially viable would require a higher two-dollar-per-hour rate and would not, at this time, have a strategy for managing the implications for residents. Alternative three is, again, the focus on those two lots, but specifically making changes to the regulations for parking in all other areas of the municipality. And so you can see a bit of an analysis of the pros and cons. Admittedly, these are from, you know, the perspective of the administration and council, the community may have others, that's why we tried to leave a space for other, saying, you know, as an acknowledgement that there may be something else that someone would identify. But based on the potential financial return and the ability to manage the impact on residents and to move quickly through this season, which is approaching quite rapidly, administration's recommendation is contained in the report.
Thank you, Mr. Given, thank you for the report. A lot of detail in here, a lot of things for council to consider. Questions for Mr. Given? Sorry, Council Wilson, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller-Empe. I, I understand that it might be challenging, but why have, why has administration not approached mitigation on residential areas? Because I, I think that it's, it'll just have to happen. I, are, have we looked at, at all about residential areas and residential passes? So like, you know, we are, even, even if we don't have, even if we don't select alternative two, high visitation times, the CB, the Central Business District is full, and they do get pushed into residential areas. So it still is an issue, even if we don't do paid parking. I think we have to tackle that situation as well. And, you know, even if we, we go with alternative one or two, I think that issue is still there. I think we have to realize that the areas close to the Central Business District are congested with visitors, and I think that on-street parking should be, you know, as you see it in, in larger centers, residential areas are blocked off for residential, or residential people or residents. Anyway, but, so I think we have to tackle that as well as choose one of these selections. And I'm not sure we can move forward without looking at that.
Thank you, Council Wilson, and I so agree with you on that. I live on the other end of town on Patricia where the grocery store is. And winter and summer, like, thank God, we had that parking at our house, but there is no space. And in summer, like, there was motorhome after motorhome, that the streets are jammed, both on the one hundred block and the two hundred and going into the three hundred block of Patricia's. So I agree totally, if we're going to bring in paid parking, we do have to look and take care of our residential areas because there will be no parking for anybody. Mr. Given?
Yeah, I can speak to Council Wilson's question of, you know, why administration didn't make a recommendation with respect to this issue. And it really is a matter of resources. You know, the, the management of parking for the, you know, five thousand and some residents of Jasper is a significant undertaking in and of itself. And, you know, in terms of the amount of time that's available and the, the funds that are available in something like this, you know, i- if the suggestion was that we should hire a parking manager to handle that kind of program, I could support that and, and could imagine that. I don't believe that council is ready at this time to invest the funds to do that for a program that we don't know exactly how it's going to work. And so the intent of the administrative recommendation was to ensure that, first and foremost, we are doing, you know, to steal, to steal something from another profession, you know, doing no harm, that we are attempting to limit our impact on residents to the extent possible. And that's why those two off-site lots, you know, it's, other than the, you know, identified users of the dog park and the potential commercial users of the RV lot, which administration is fully aware of, there's relatively little resident use of those lots. And we can measure what kind of spill over there may be into residential areas. But by and large, we are not going to make things worse this year from this smaller scope project. And that would allow us to get some results under our belt, potentially some additional revenue that could fund an additional position if we needed to have it going forward in the future. And so it is that a, a step of building a foundation of knowledge and experience that would allow us to move to the next progression of addressing the overall parking issue in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Given, and Council Demona.
Well, in the midst of, of the discussion of doing no harm and maximizing revenues, are we putting more consideration into the lot, the newly constructed lot in Block S, and maximizing the spaces available there? I'm not sure how that's progressing in, you know, the, the want and need from the commercial sector, but we have a lot of empty space there. I have a lot of people coming to me, asking me what's going on there. And in the broader context of paid parking, you know, could we make better use of that as we go forward and, and rolling these measures out?
Mr. Given?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Council Demona, I'm aware of that issue. You know, our enforcement manager has related to me and others that, you know, there is still the ongoing challenge of increased monitoring and regulation of our current rules. There are, let's say, a number of, of people who could choose to park in that commercial lot, who are choosing to park in other locations that would not be our preferred locations. You know, they're essentially choosing on-street parking there. And so administration would imagine through the course of this, this program, attempting to, you know, address that as, as recommended in our alternative one here, the increased monitoring of on-street parking would give us an opportunity to start to make an impact on increasing the use of that S block. I would not suggest that we would solve that and have it one hundred percent full this year because we are talking about changing behaviors. But the opportunity to have increased monitoring would allow us to capture a bit more data about, okay, how many people are actually parking on-street? And what is the utilization of that S block lot?
Mr. Given? Other questions for Mr. Given? Council Geno?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Given, for the, this report. I'm wondering why we do not include the four hundred block of Patricia Street and Canot Street in the downtown business district. I realize there's some open spaces in there, but I think if you speak to the businesses that are on those streets, the one thing that they really affects their business in the summertime is permanent parking in front of their store. Large vehicles, motorhomes, trucks and trailer park in that area for huge lengths of time, more than two hours, which their signs support two hours. So while you may want to leave some of the spaces that are not congested, have no businesses without some parking controls, meters, and so on and so forth, I think the areas in front of the businesses should be controlled to to allow the parking that they have in front of their street to be used for parking for their customers, as opposed to permanent all-day parking for people who are basically gallivanting around town. So I, I, I think you should consult with the businesses at that end, the far end of four hundred, the low numbers of four hundred at both Patricia and Canot before you, you conclude this. Thank you.
Mr. Given?
Yes, thanks, Council Geno. So I would one hundred percent agree with you. It is an issue in those areas, and we should consult with those residents and businesses, particularly the businesses obviously down that way. And that's why this alternative number two is not administration's recommendation for this year. In order to do that consultation with those businesses and to have a solid plan for how we would implement paid parking over such a large area and such a high priority area, administration would advise that that should be in a subsequent year so that we can undertake exactly the kind of consultation you're talking about, Council Geno, that, that needs to happen.
Council, no, go ahead.
But in the meantime, this summer, we, we have an increased problem of, of parking, lengthy parking times in front of these businesses, won't we?
Well, I guess that's the, that's the idea behind the pilot project is really to actually get some objective numbers and some data. I, I can't predict right now whether there will or won't be. You know, certainly, based on, you know, council's long experience in the community, you have probably very good sense. You know, will the change to these two lots furthest to the west impact those businesses further to the east? Maybe? How much? Unknown. You know, and, and that's the intent of the pilot project is to actually be able to gather some information that would allow us to say, you know what, this really made things worse, or this had a minimal impact, or this had no impact. We don't, and I, and I am not making any claim about what it would be. I'm just specifically saying that at this time, we don't know. And the intent of a pilot would be to allow us to actually gather some information so we could make informed decisions going forward.
Council Demona?
Well, you know, I appreciate everything that's here, and I appreciate all the work that's, that's gone behind this. And, you know, and just to, for the, the sake of, of people watching in, if they, if they're going to watch this, or if any information comes out in the media on, on this discussion. We saw the impacts of vehicle traffic last year, and we didn't have our biggest campground open. And there's a lot of things that, that trickle off from that. There's going, there's overnight camping in the community, there's the extra garbage litter, and then all the other things that we don't want to think about. So I am just thinking that that's going to be coming to us at a greater scale this year, particularly with, you know, vaccinations and us relying more on regional traffic and people feeling safer getting out of their houses. So in the past, when we've revolved, eat, kind of relied on a lot of bus tours and, and people being on foot in the community, that's going to be expanded in a different direction. So we're going to have a lot of, you know, couples and families traveling in vehicles. So there's going to be a higher concentration of visitation with vehicles in the community. And we need to take some drastic measures quickly to help, you know, mitigate some of the, the negatives that come out of that and maybe try to get some money out of it while we can. And I don't want to milk our tourists and, and deter them in any way, but, you know, people are going to be descending on our community en masse, and we need to figure out a quick and profitable way that we can, you know, get some, recover some costs, so to speak. So however that rolls out, I know I'm just making comments, but, you know, we have to, we have to keep the urgency there, understanding all those things that, that are going to affect us again.
Council Butter?
Thanks very much. Thanks, Mr. Given, for this updated request. I got to say, I, I don't know where we go with this. I feel like council is, or we all are collectively in a way, between a rock and a hard place here. Administration proposed and council did direct that we approach paid parking with a pilot project. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a good conceptual way to proceed, that we would, we would sort of take a soft approach to beginning this for the community. For concerns of too much change too quickly and lack of resources, no doubt. The principle of doing no harm or as little harm as possible before we proceed further. But I feel like that exactly by choosing to go down the road of a pilot project, we might be setting ourselves up for failure. It's, it's pretty clear, while it might be implicit in saying it, that virtually none of the seven of us sitting here are really satisfied with the pilot concepts that we're being presented with. We haven't voted, I don't really know that that's true, but it seems to be. And I think we, we're finding that the devil is in the details. It's a great idea to talk about going forward with a pilot project, right up until the time comes that we say, well, what does that pilot project look like? And we try to avoid harm and not go too far too quickly. And I'm afraid that if we proceed with, I have to say, maybe any one of these three pilots, that we're going to create a scenario where we're almost certain to fail because there, because of the unintended but foreseeable consequences, there are going to be unintended consequences if we take this, honestly, any one of these, but the consequences, while unintended, are going to be completely foreseeable. And I, I mentioned last time, we talked about this, that I struggle a little with the rationale between somewhat, what, it looks a little arbitrary to me. We picked two downtown, the largest two downtown sites. We say, okay, we're going to charge people to stay there, but they are, people are going to do, and they are going to do it in their hundreds and thousands in their motorhomes this year with the campground open. They are going to do what Mr. Given referred to as already a problem. They are going to choose on-street parking. There's just no doubt. And one thing I pointed out last time, we talked about this, is we have already a problem with parking regulation downtown because most of Canot Drive is completely unregulated. We regulate three or four, depending on how, how you count blocks of Canot and say, to our parking. But all of the rest of it, people can park there for, I think, up to seventy-two hours with impunity, unless they fall asleep in their vehicle and then are camping. So I understand the sense that, well, we will add more monitoring to the project to make option A or option one maybe more likely to succeed. But what's monitoring if we don't have regulation? If we're not going to add some sense of restriction to parking on the rest of Canot, that's the first thing in my mind. Our new parking lot for long-term unregulated parking will be Canot Drive. Because people will go there, and they will go over to the sites where we say, okay, we're going to charge you to pay here. They will drive through to them. They will say, well, I don't want to pay. I'm going to go over here. And, and they'll be circulating around and I, I don't know. And I'm starting to wonder if is piloting this the way to go? I know we did it largely because we really want to get paid parking underway in our term. But I fear we may be creating, well, maybe a small monster will be creating a monster. I'm wondering if we have the appetite to do, run this as a pilot, or if we take a step back, say, let's review this from a higher level policy level. Let's ask, what are the consequences for the community we want? The obvious one is revenue, but we haven't really talked about how we want to see, how we want to manage the impact on residents, how we want to manage the impact on businesses. We really haven't delved into those questions, preferring to maybe deal with them after a, a year of test driving this thing. But I'm worried that the only thing we're going to learn from our pilot project is that it didn't work. And we'll be, or it won't be us, sitting here eight months from now saying, well, that didn't work. And we'll be right back to now, what are we going to do? So I'm wondering if collectively we have the appetite to move forward with the pilot project or not? Because if we don't make this decision soon, as Mr. Given had said, time and lack of resources will leave us just turning circles.
Thank you, Counselor Butler. Some very good points there. Mr. Given?
Thank you. I, you know, I just feel it's important to say that, you know, the idea of saying, well, that didn't work, I, I think that that's completely possible. It's completely possible with every decision that council faces, that after the fact, new information comes to light. You know, an unintended consequence raises its, its head. I think that that's completely true. And the question is, what approach do we want to take as an organization and as a community? Do we want to try something and find out potentially something that didn't work? An approach that is an opportunity for learning so that we can improve going forward? Or do we want to invest the resources upfront to do a detailed analysis of a much, much larger issue and still have the potential for unintended consequences that we didn't predict? You know, and so it's that, there's sort of that, what is our desire? And I think that in, in many different areas, the practice of investing huge amounts of time and money in large programs has been demonstrated to still leave space for failures. And so if we are a community that is not inviting failure, but is open to the learning opportunities that present themselves from, from managed approaches, where we are intentionally measuring what's happening, where we set key performance indicators and measure how we do against those, and then have an explicit step of saying, well, what did we learn here? And learnings can come in a positive form. Hey, that was really great. Or they can come in a negative, to be, you know, to be really blunt. Oh, man, that didn't work at all. Let's not do that again. But in either case, you know, I, I think those are the two sort of approaches that really are in front of council. The alternatives aside, all these alternatives are absolutely on a pilot program basis. But if council wanted to look at that other approach of saying, look, let's just invest the time and money and resources to do the, a community-wide detailed strategy and move forward with implementation on that strategy. That is completely possible. I'd suggest that it would not be possible this year. And I would further suggest that it's still highly likely that we would arrive at the end after making a decision and implementing and spending those resources, that we came out with some tweaks at minimum that we would need to do after the fact to revise and account for things that we didn't expect. And so if that was the case, why not start on a smaller scale that has a better potential to be financially positive and leave us still that room for learning and opportunity?
Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor Demoto, Mayor Ireland.
Okay. I know that this concept might put a little bit of strain on administration, and we're probably not going to go in that direction. But just a little story, if you, if you can hang in with me. My very first St. Patrick's Day, the, where I was running a pub, my owner was out of town and couldn't be there, but was at another St. Patrick's Day party in another community. He came back and said, oh, my God, I couldn't believe the amount of Guinness that was flowing around trays and trays and trays of pints. They had Guinness on sale, and it was flying off the shelves. And I said, same here. And he goes, what did you charge? And I said, full price, because that was going to be the highest item on demand, so why put it at a discount? He gave me a hug and kissed me on the cheek and thanked me and gave me a few extra days off that week. So anyway, just, you know, to translate that into, you know, our community, when it comes to, to paid parking, my theory is, why don't we just charge for the highest demand spots at the highest, at the peak season that they're demanded and start with that? Pilot schmilet, I just say, go with that. And, you know, I, I know that a lot of businesses in the community say that's the way to go. And if we're going to maximize, you know, doing revenue and putting, you know, resources towards whatever it is, whether we charge a dollar, $2, whether the maximum is one hour, two hours, we go with that. And then other parking lots, we just say, okay, you know, these ones, you can stay here for three hours, two hours, and half hour by the public washers, or, you know, 20 minutes, whatever it is. I just, I don't think that the math behind the science or vice versa, it is that difficult. And, you know, I, and policing and doing those other things on, you know, the peripheral with, you know, on, on Patricia Street with, outside, just outside the commercial district. You know, you have to have a permit to, to do that, and I don't think those are hard things to, to roll out. But that's just me. I know that there's a lot of things that go into this, but I think there's an easier approach to this just to get it done right away than to doing pilot projects and things. We know what the, the high-impact areas are, and I, I think that's where we should start. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors Demoto. Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller-Heranthe. I, I feel for your position, and so I want to acknowledge that what I prefer to do is to discuss this issue in terms of debate with council, not with Mr. Given. But I do have perhaps a couple of questions for Mr. Given, if I might proceed there. And then I, I would, if somebody prepared to make a motion, I might do it myself. But I would like to debate among council where we go from here. I, I think, and, and I think council, they have to take responsibility for not articulating our expectations from what we called a pilot project, or even really understanding what we meant by a pilot project. It seems to me that a pilot project need not be synonymous with partial measures. We had a longstanding pilot project, for example, with busking. We would never have conceived to measure the impact of busking by starting with putting buskers in the farthest corner of the RV parking lot and see what impact that was going to have on the downtown. We understood that in order to measure the effectiveness of busking, we'd have to put buskers downtown and see how it goes. The pilot portion of it was simply, we're not saying this is going to be permanent. We're going to test drive it first. And I, I think that we can't have a test drive when we put the car up on blocks in a far, faraway parking lot. And the engine might run, but I don't think we're going to learn what we want. And so again, I return to what we left with administration. If we didn't set out our, our goals, then understandably, we're going to have difficult, difficult time achieving them. Mr. Given, specific for you, though, just, just to understand some of the assumptions, two of the assumptions underlying the report. In the the request for decision under discussion, the first sentence is, "The intent of a pilot project is to reduce the risk or impact of unintended consequences." And I, I turn that to you with, with this statement, that in, in my view, that is not the intent. And how, how could that be the intent? That might be a subsidiary goal of a pilot proj, project to not incur unintended consequences. But surely the intent of a pilot project is to gain relevant information for future action. And if we restrict our pilot project to outline parking, what relevant information will we learn about paid parking in the downtown core? And will we not simply have to come back to this in a later year without much to go on? I mean, it's going to have to be new information at some point. So I, I questioned first that assumption, and then on a smaller matter, there is an assumption on, made on the third page of the document under the alternative two, that because of the public, pardon me, the, the commercial use of private space, some number of stalls might be removed from the downtown core in any event. But that assumption seems to me to be based on a suggestion that we would not be charging for use of those parking spots by a commercial enterprise. And I'm not sure that that is an assumption that I am prepared to make. In other words, a pilot project for paid parking allows us to put a value on a parking space. And that value need not be restricted to parking a vehicle there. That value could be used to, to assess the value for a commercial enterprise that wants to use that same space for some other purpose. So I, I'm just not sure that I, I follow the reasoning of that particular assumption. So if you could speak to those two assumptions, I would appreciate it. And then I would invite council to open debate among itself on where we go from here.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Mr. Given?
Sure, so I'll address those assumptions in, in reverse order, your worship. First, I'd say that, you know, from the math that's provided in the document, and I just did it very quickly, so I hope I don't trip myself up. But if we said, oh, and that was at the dollar per stall level. So if we said that one stall, you know, so I've done the math on 134 stalls. So you could take that down to one stall and arrive at what your value per stall is over the course of the year. And I believe that would be about $1,500 over the course of the season. So for, you know, one, one stall at $2 an hour for five hours a day for 150 days equals $1,500. And so that is possible to, to derive a value from that. And we also have another way of deriving the value of a stall in the Parking Authority bylaw, which sort of pegs the value of a stall that is permanently removed from service in $2017 at, I believe it's $7,999. So there's two different ways of devising the value of a stall. But certainly, we can work out what the, you know, at least the nominal value is using the same math that's provided here. Going to the other perceived assumption that's built into that first sentence, I would make the observation that the sentence continues to say that it, you know, is to reduce the impact of unintended consequences and to enable both robust community involvement and the development of objective data, which can inform future council decision-making. So that is explicitly a part of the intent of any pilot project is to gather data. And I would point council back to the Community Engagement Plan, which isn't presented here because it is a bit dependent on the scope that council chooses. But the Community Engagement Plan specifically identified working with stakeholders upfront to identify what are relevant key performance indicators so that we could first identify them with the community's help about what things we should be measuring before we start, measuring them before we start, and then measuring them, you know, through the course of the project and at the end of the project. And so administration did build that step into the Community Engagement Plan. It might not, it isn't obviously presented in this report because that was a part of that Community Engagement Plan that came last week, or sorry, last committee, the whole meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Given.
Thank you.
So council, is somebody prepared to make a motion on one of the recommendations that administration has put forward? Or make a motion that they would like council to consider for debate? Counselor Margaret, I see your hands.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor, I think I preemptively put my hand up. I'm, I'm ready for debate, but I'm not ready to present a motion.
So council, do we want to debate the options put forward by administration before a motion? Or do we want just somebody on council want to propose another recommendation? I, I kind of like Counselor Demoto's tale on the Guinness. Personally, I think I don't like the idea of the RV parking as one of the areas. And the reason that is, it's across the tracks. And for years, we've been trying to have people with RVs park over there. And I think if we make that among other, the other parking lot where we have to pay, I agree that they will all be on the streets and we're kind of, that's not kind of what we had in mind when that was built. That was to have people with RVs park there to free up the area and town for other parking. And I think that, in my opinion, that we either put downtown core as the pilot project, leave the parking lots open and direct traffic to the parking lots, and bring it in in the downtown core, or we bring it in all over town. That's just my point of view, and I wasn't here last week. Counselor Geno?
I am mixed. I would say mixed up. I believe we had listened to two proposals somewhat like eight or nine months ago. And I didn't take any notes. But they were very specific, and they had done a lot of homework. And they, they had, had really good proposals, of course, during business, so they, they would do that. But it, I see, what I see happen here is this is, we're getting ourselves involved that we don't have the expertise in. And it's more complex than, than we think. We think that we're going to move into a pilot project, but, you know, I think none of the counselors are very happy with the direction which this pilot project is going because it has more hints of lack of success than, than a success in my mind. And I think that generally is feeling of counselors. I, 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 again, I'm mixed, and I kind of just speaking, but I'm very confused as well. I think that if we invite people to submit a proposal, that we should listen to them, we should select one and listen to them, rather than basically, you know, the way I see it is that, well, we're going to do our own thing. But I don't think that we have the expertise to do our own thing. I think it's much more complex than, than, than it is. And I'm not saying we have to hire a consultant. But these guys did come to town, and they did spend a lot of money to get here. And I think to totally ignore them is, is, is not professional. I think that we should consider them somehow. Because the way I, the direction we're going now, I, I, I think it has more, more, more failures than success. Sorry. Thank you.
Counselor Demoto?
Well, you know what? I appreciate what the mayor had said and, and, and yourself, and, well, everybody. Everyone's had some really good input here, but I'm with Counselors, you know. You know, like these, these people did come to town. I, I know that, I mean, I'm really biased towards one because I know that it's worked in, in other resort communities and why we're here, you know, at this stage, and, you know, not to take away anything on, on the preparation that admin has given to us. But I think, you know, there's some really low-hanging fruit here in this one. But, uh, I think, you know, there's some really low hanging fruit here and this one's pretty easy. And sorry for using that term again, but, um, you know, I, I say would go with, with, with the company that's showing strength in, in other resort areas. And, uh, and that could easily implement, um, something that's, uh, you know, um, easily accessible. And you can pay by your however device and, uh, coming to town, you're paying. That's it.
Counselor McGrath and then Counselor Butler.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller and B. I too, um, I'm very indecisive right now and I apologize. I know administration has put so much work into this. And I know that paid parking in Jasper gives us some additional revenue that our community really, really requires to operate and carry on a sustainable future. But I feel like I'm ill-equipped with the expertise and the know-how on how to move forward. I, we're moving into a two and a half hour budget conversation tomorrow. And I would see that same style of a workshop possibly being beneficial for us with, as other counselors have stated, possibly some outside expertise, maybe from, uh, a paid parking company. If we, if we decided what, what, um, organization we would like to go with. The intention and the meaningfulness that, that's going to have to go into this is so deep. And right now, specifically this current time, it's a problematic time for the retailers that I'm connected with. They're having a hard time buying in because what if that five to ten dollars that their customers are spending on parking takes away from the five to ten dollars that might be spent at the ice cream shop? And I think it's a bigger, more complex situation as Counselor Jono stated. I want to tie an S block to these conversations. I want to talk about designated RV parking. I think that it's a bigger, more complex equation to work through than what we're currently working through with what's in front of us. And I'm even tempted to say, I know this is really important, but maybe this isn't the year. Maybe this is a time to hold to do meaningful engagement and put lots and lots of intention into the next steps and continue this really thoughtful work. But possibly wait until the next summer for implementation.
I'd just like to respond to Counselor McGrath. One of the things that I found last summer, just working in, in the tour side of tourism business, when I had people call, they all asked me how much it was to park here. And last year we dealt with really a regional market. And Albertans are used to paying for parking when they go to the cities and anywhere else. Previously, we had, um, visitors from all over the world that probably some didn't pay for parking. But the regional market, especially people from Calgary and Edmonton and Grand Prairie, they all expect to pay for parking. You go to the city, you go to a doctor's appointment, you pay for parking, that's just part of life. I had a lot of surprise visitors that we didn't have paid parking. So I don't think, um, somebody is not going to go buy that ice cream because they have to pay for parking. A lot of visitors, a lot of people that come to our town expect to pay for parking. That's just what I found by talking to people on the phone last year. Counselor Butler, then Counselor Wilson.
Thank you very much. So a couple of points. First is to, in response to the suggestion that what we need is expertise at the table to help us with this. I, I have to say, I, I can't agree. Um, I in fact did go back and have a look at, uh, the information we got from the parking, paid parking companies that provided us with information. And those were not detailed proposals at all. They really just, um, counted up the parking spaces that we have and said, you could make this much money. And it looked like a lot of money. But the problems we're having are not with revenue potential. The problems we're having here are with community impacts. And those companies are not going to help us work through that. Those companies don't know our community. They are not going to provide, I would venture, a great deal of insight until, into what will work in their communities. If we hire a company to come in and give us advice on implementing paid parking, I suspect the first thing they're going to say is, well, where do you want us to implement paid parking and where not? And we'll be back having this conversation. So I'm not sure that we can expect, um, a contractor to come in and walk us through these difficult questions. I'm also afraid that if we don't embark this year on something that it won't happen. Now, we as a council made a firm commitment that we were going to at least pilot this, this year. So I'm, I'm very hesitant to back away altogether unless council decides it, you know, doesn't want to. I know I've suggested that potential. I said last week or two weeks ago that I was prepared to support the option one. If we address the question of regulation of, um, the remainder of downtown, I still think that without any other, um, actions, if the only thing we do is say you're going to pay to park in those two sites, that we really will set us up for failure. I'd like to know if council would be, if other counselors would be interested in a little bit of a middle ground, where maybe instead of saying, well, we're just going to pick these two lots, we pick essentially all of the downtown lots. If we're going to focus on charging for parking lots and, and let people park for long periods of time, but in those parking lots, but pay for them. If we were to do that, and then in addition, if we were to regulate parking on the rest of Canot and the peripheral areas perhaps of, um, of Patricia, by restricting to two hours, four hours, or, or whatever administration maybe would suggest in the rest of those areas. So we don't simply give people an, uh, an immediate and obvious alternative to pay. Why would I pay here when I can just go park and cannot drive? And I, I think we do have within our power to perhaps regulate along Canot and Patricia and stay accepting residents. Um, all residents display residence ticker in their windshield. So just saying that does allow us to at least take some measures to mitigate the effects on residents until we have the opportunity to develop a broader view of how do we feel about residents parking. So I, I'd like to ask if something like that would be a middle ground that council would be interested in. And, and certainly to hear comments from Mr. Given, um, about maybe we expand it into some or all, I, I count up to five downtown parking areas, if you consider also the one by the fire hall. Charge for those, allow longer term parking on those. And then all of the remainder of Canot and the proximal areas, Patricia maybe should be restricted to, say, two hours, accepting residents. And maybe we can, maybe that would be a middle ground that I'm interested in thoughts on that.
Thank you, Counselor Butler, Counselor Wilson.
I put all my support behind everything Counselor Butler just said. I, I don't want to see us slip back into, uh, making this too complicated. I, I, I think that, uh, um, we have to try something as, uh, Mr. Given was saying. And, and we're going to learn through our, uh, successes and failures. And, um, but I, 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 I think that there is support of a larger scale rather than alternative one or three. I think, uh, the inclusion of, um, all of what Counselor Butler has suggested, I, I would be in, in full supportive. And, um, I guess I'll end it there. But yeah, Counselor Butler, I, I would, I would support you and, um, your suggestions.
I also like your suggestions, uh, Counselor Butler. The other thing I would like to draw out there is that we have a number of hotels down there that don't have parking, that, um, guests park in the parking lot. So maybe we bring in a timeline that, um, we have paid parking from eight thirty in the morning till seven in the evening, something like that. So then that is not impacting, um, the hotels and guests in the first pilot year of the project till something has worked out, um, for hotels and guests, uh, for parking. And that's just another suggestion. Mr. Given, you wanted to respond to Counselor Butler.
Yeah, uh, well, I just wanted to provide, you know, counsel with the information that, uh, the RFP that we have out for a service provider. And again, these would be, you know, likely some of the folks that you heard from last year would be the people who would respond to our RFP. And, and I think Counselor Butler, uh, is right that, you know, they probably did the math of, okay, how many spaces are there? And how much could you charge? And, and do we have the technology to do that? And, and the answer would be, you know, yes, they can. Um, now administration will evaluate sort of who would give us the best proposal to do so. Um, I'm informed by the, uh, Ms. Malincheck that the RFP does provide flexibility to adjust the scope to whatever council wishes. I think what would be helpful, so if council wished to do a larger area, um, and that is certainly your right to decide that. Um, the, I guess, request administration would have is if you could, in, in the motion or any motion that might arise, clearly define the areas that you wish to have, uh, included. Clearly define the rate that you wish to charge and clearly define, uh, questions around timelines like, uh, Counselor Keller and B. Uh, you mentioned about, you know, between certain hours. Um, those are the things, those parameters are what allow us to develop a program. Um, if council, um, you know, doesn't, uh, support or isn't able to support any of the administrative recommendations here, that is no problem. Um, but what administration does need to move forward in twenty twenty-one is a clear definition of the parameters of which you wish us to work with a service provider on implementing paid parking. And ultimately, um, you know, that is up to all of you to decide. Uh, but it does need to be clearly laid out. Um, administration has come forward with, with some recommendations. And, and if council, uh, wants to build off these, change these, that is completely unbound. Would, would, they just need to be clearly defined so we can move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor Jono.
In response, thank you. In response to Counselor Butler, uh, regulations and controlling the parking downtown, the best way to regulate is to put a meter in charge. I, as you know where I live, I live in the four, four hundred block and the nearly four hundred block. And I look at the small businesses around here. They all depend on people who happen to drive by and see the storefront and pull over and go into the store. If you allow motorhomes to park in front of those businesses, and I think of the, the mercantile and the candy store and the liquor store and sporting goods store and the restaurants. If you allow motorhome to park in front to totally hide those businesses, it's a long two hours. If the two hours is enforced. So I, I, I cannot, I cannot, uh, I, I, I I can't accept a lot of the things that are, that are being said here. I, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to paid parking, I'm not at all. But I just don't. The implementation here seems to be, I, I, I'm lacking some language, but I think you guys know what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Counselor Wilson, did you, um, put something, something flashed up, Counselor Wilson? And I'm just wondering if you put a comment.
No, sorry, uh, Deputy Mayor, uh, I, I was just sending you a private note suggesting that I will have to sneak away, uh, here, uh, in a few minutes. So I'll try to stay to the end of this topic, but I will be, uh, black, you'll see my black screen here soon.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Wilson. Counselor McGrath.
I'm curious with Counselor Butler's idea, which sounded like it could soon be a motion. If we could build in a concept or a strategy that would direct RVs to the lots or to a designated lot and implement a strategy in the municipality where that is the only permissible place for RVs to be parked for any extended or at all. Maybe there has to be some consideration to dropping off, um, mobility challenged persons in, in certain drop-off spots in, in the community. But, um, I think that's what I'm hearing Counselor Jono request is not to have RVs in our downtown core, not to be parked in front of businesses. That's certainly an intention that I have in, um, wanting more time and more discussion to discover what alternatives can be taking the large RVs out of our downtown core. Um, but keeping them close so that they can walk to visit the businesses of Jasper and continue to support the businesses of Jasper.
Maybe we allow the RV park over in the S block, um, out of the program and encourage all RVs to go there. Maybe we bring a stipulation, no RVs can park downtown, like they're in walking distance to downtown. That may be one alternative. And then paid parking within the parking lots downtown and RVs can't be in those parking lots. They have to go across the tracks. That could be one alternative there. Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller and B. And I don't yet have a, a motion that I'm prepared to present. But I, I agree with those comments and I, I'm prepared to, to listen further and get more clarity on Counselor Butler's proposal. But we did in fact, um, in previous terms, spend a considerable amount of money to create precisely an RV parking lot to get RVs out of the downtown core. And then we further incentivize people to actually use that by spending more money on a pedestrian underpass to make it a little more, um, easy for them to park there and still visit the downtown. To negate of all of that work, all we have to do is say, well, now you've got to pay for it. The only place we've given you that is accessible through a pedestrian tunnel, we're now going to charge you for. To, to me, um, that, that is not the way to begin. And I, I appreciate that no matter what we do, um, there may be failure. Um, but from my perspective, I would rather be bold and fail than timid and fail. If, if failure is, is the option. It seems to me though, in question of timing and, and Counselor McGrath, um, mentioned this and some hesitation from particular businesses. We heard last year from businesses, particularly along Patricia Street, who did not see a benefit from the enhanced commercial use of public space, but wanted us to address the parking issue because in the words that they use I think the current, um, continuation of making fact presents us with an opportunity to try and configure a benefit for those other businesses who can't take advantage of the enhanced use of public space. And if, if paid parking does translate to more rapid turnover than those businesses, I think have an opportunity to do better. And so my thought going into this was that we should institute on a trial basis, call it a pilot program if you want. But on a trial basis, let's convert all of the two-hour parking in town to paid parking and leave everything alone, everything else. We want people to go park in parking lots, that's why we built them. We want them to go across the tracks and park their RVs. That's why we built it, that's why we built the pedestrian underpass. But the two-hour parking, that's, that is where I think we should focus, paid parking. Um, my concern is that if, you know, we are running an arena, we'd be charging for the nosebleed streets, seats and giving away the, the seats at center ice. It, to me, it, it just doesn't make sense. And again, uh, maybe it won't work, um, but I would rather, I would rather make a really honest attempt at trying to manage a really valuable municipal asset, which is parking stalls, um, wholeheartedly, not timidly. But as yet, uh, I'm not sure whether I'm prepared to make a motion that, that we go just, uh, with paid parking in the current two-hour parking because there are extenuating, um, issues. And I really think that we need a resident parking permit, um, addition to, to anything and particularly for, um, streets that are adjacent to commercial parking. We've already heard from residents who recognize that that is going to be one of the spillover effects. So it's not, it's not an intentional, but it's a known consequence of, of any program. In any event, I, I just speak, um, on behalf of, of, uh, focusing, I think where, um, we have the primary parking, which is the two-hour parking and leave parking lots as they are.
Counselor De Moda.
I'm fully with Mayor Ireland's concept and, and I like that idea. And if it, if it means just taking a week so that we can, uh, draft together, uh, you know, a concept that we can vote on next week as opposed to making motions this week for council to accept. Uh, I'm more of I'm more of taking advantage of the higher demand spaces and. Try and fail than and and not try at all and and. Mayor Ireland, you you said it perfectly and and I'd rather, I'd rather fail doing something bold than and and then fail doing something timidly and. I could not have worded and and said those things better, so congratulations, and I think that's what we should do. I'm, I'm ready to take a week to to really piece something together that would be acceptable for council and. And the rest of the community, and I think that's where we need to start at the highest demand spots.
Counselor Geno.
I also agree. I'm pleased to see that the mayor has again state. Sent us back to the course, the proper, the proper course, and he summed it up very nicely and. Is this right? We should be charging for the primary. And allow people free for the cheap seats. Thank you.
Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Keller, I just want to be abundantly clear when I, when I spoke about resident passes. I want to be clear that. I would like to see a program that other communities have for parking around major venues. If you go to Edmonton, for example, during a major event near the Coliseum or well, not the Coliseum anymore, whatever it is downtown. Residents are able to park in that area with a resident pass, and I suggest that for. Streets adjacent to where we might have paid parking, that should apply, but I'm not suggesting. The residents get to park for free in the paid zone. They, we would have to have a program where, say, on the, on the 700 block of Patricia. Your resident pass would allow you to park there. But we would discourage visitors from taking all of that parking to get away from, from paying for parking. So I I just wanted to add that that clarity to my remarks.
A lot of areas in Bampu, in the residential areas, they have signs up that says on the. Residents can park permit parking in those areas, and it seems to work quite well there behind the hotels. So are we making a motion to direct administration? Counselor Butler.
Thanks very much. So my suggestion was. An attempt to modify administrations preferred alternative. So we would be going in the direction recommended, at least something more like the direction recommended by by administration. Mayor Ireland's suggestion correlates, as I understand it, to alternative two. With perhaps a bit of modification, which I agree with, to address at least nearby areas of residential parking by. Perhaps, perhaps we post them. Two hours accepting residents, but what I want to draw attention to is administration's. Suggestion that we will see considerably less income or profit from from this approach. If we should do so, we should understand that one of the reasons administration. Recommended option one is they feel that it is, you know, there's better fiscal outcomes, so. The suggestion is if we go with alternative two, that we modify from $1 an hour to $2 per hour for those downtown areas. And we'd be looking at $84,000 or something come, so considerably less than the other alternative, though. There are so many unknowns in both of those financial forecasts that it is hard to say. So let's just be clear that I, in fact, I like to confirm that what Mayor Ireland is suggesting. Really correlates to alternative two. Is that, is that your intent?
Mayor Ireland.
Yes, I I accept that if it correlates to that, and that is the same understanding that. Mr. Given has on behalf of administration and then perhaps. I could make a motion to accept that. There are a couple of things I, in my view, if, if we were to proceed in that direction. I would suggest that. The hours of of operation for paid parking would be the same. Limits as the as the current two hour, that is. I, I think that it's nine o'clock till five o'clock right now on those those two hour. Post, although some might be different, I can't say that I've got all the details. But I would agree that by evening time, people parking for for dinner should not necessarily be subject to to the paper during the rush of the day. I would think that paid parking for the same time limits, and again, we would have to do some work with respect to. Permit parking for residents and prohibiting parking by visitors on. Adjacent street, so the the whole program cannot be limited just to the two hour parking. I think we have to anticipate that. That will by necessity. Encourage people to park on residential streets, and so I would think that the both sides of Patricia from the 100 block to the 400 block. Might be for permit parking only. Maybe cannot up to, I guess, wherever the two hour parking start. East and from the SO station to the west. I, I'm not going to try and name every street, but I think that we have to recognize that we need to protect. Residential surrounding areas from potential overflow, but apart from that, the paid parking. As described in alternative two. Might be the best. I appreciate that it's there, and I I just want to say closing that I really do appreciate the efforts. Demonstrated by by you, Mr. Given, and by administration generally from giving us opportunities to save ourselves from ourselves.
So Mayor Ireland, are you making that motion?
I will with the addition of the the permitting adjunct to it to protect residents in adjacent areas, and that's a little. Indistinct, perhaps, the way to do it is to make a motion that administration come back with. A more fully developed plan based on alternative two, which incorporates permits for residential parking in adjacent neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Counselor De Moda.
Yeah, sorry for the audio video switching here. I, I understand where where the mayor's coming from, and I'm not. Either way, we're going to be motion, making a motion to direct council and administration for a future vote, so whatever happens. Like said, like we said earlier, we're not experts on this, but you know, like. And we might be relying on anecdotal information. Some of the stuff that the mayor already talked about, you know, I used to live five houses up. From the downtown core and, you know, alternatively, like you might think that. Parking at certain hours might be at higher demand, but I know that if I wasn't securing a spot in front of my house by 5:00 P. M. In the summertime. During our peak season, I'm not getting a parking spot for two hours. So the dinner rush does bring people into town, so whatever the hours and parameters that we're thinking about. You know, for people that might not have lived in those areas. You might have a a different perception on what actually occurs there, so unless we're getting that firsthand information, I, I. Regardless of what the times are, I think, you know, you're downtown, you're paying for parking until 9:00 P. M. Type of thing, and then the permits on those, on those. Trickle streets, you know, that's 24 hours. You, you have a, you park in that zone, you have to have a permit. That to park there, that's where I go. I don't know what that motion would look like, but I'm, I'm with going forward with something. So thank you.
Mr. Given.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Keller, I. So I think I just appreciate the direction councils going, and administration can certainly act on direction that is based on alternative two. I think. The previous discussion or, you know, slightly preceding discussion about converting all two hour paid parking. Sorry, two hour, two hour parking to paid parking was potentially more clear. Because I think that some people have talked about further along Patricia Street. Which isn't in alternative two, so your worship, you did early on say that potentially the conversion of. The areas that are currently two hour parking, which I would imagine are well defined. Should be converted to paid parking. I think that that is actually maybe more clear than than. And and more in alignment with the discussion that I've heard from council, frankly. You know, than than just the areas that are highlighted in alternative two, so that would be one piece of advice if if council. If that council's intent, if you could make that specific. The, I think we understand the intention around incorporating the use of residential permits. To exempt residents from. The requirements to move off street in residential areas, if I can, if I can summarize what I think I heard. And then finally, I think we do need some definition of of the times of day. So the administrative proposal, I think, generally took a longer time, like our 42% of usage. You know, accounted for not all the possible hours in the day being used. But I believe it was based on there being a wider window than from nine to five, and so if council had an idea. Of how, what times of day there should be paid parking. In the areas that are currently limited to two hour on street parking, that would be helpful. So if you could say from. Eight till five, nine to five, eight till eight, what, you know. Providing that definition around that parameter helps us build out a program. And then the final thing that I would say is, I think, for council to act on this in the 2021 year. There are a number of administrative steps that need to happen subsequent to council giving us direction. That includes hiring and training staff, working with a service provider, ordering signs and signage and having that installed, and so. I would suggest that, and and I don't know council's level of comfort, but this should be the kind of thing that council directs us to go. And implement the program in accordance with the parameters that you set. I think if this is a come back to council in two weeks' time. And then we will consider at that time whether or not we wish to move ahead. We've taken two weeks out of the potential of getting orders in for signs, working with the selected provider in the RFP. You know, putting a posting out for staffing and and starting the process of engaging them, so if council wishes to move forward. I think ideally it would be direction. Again, council has approved moving forward with a pilot project in 2021. You're being clear that this is not a forever and ever program. That it, that I think is should be clear to the community. If you can define the parameters of the program today and give administration to a direction to implement based on those parameters. I think that gives us the best chance of success.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor De Moda, then Counselor McGrath.
Well, I was just being more specific and and just say. You know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna talk about the areas. I would go, I would propose Pyramid Lake Road. Or so on Canot and Patricia from Pyramid Lake Road to Hazel in that downtown on both sides. Of Canot and and Patricia and from nine to nine. That's what my concept would be. I just want to bounce that off of other counselors. Thank you.
Counselor McGrath.
Thank you. I have a few questions. I'm not sure exactly who I'm directing it at. I think probably Mayor Ireland from his intention of of the motion. And just for conversation purposes, with residential permits, I'd like to understand a little bit more clearly. So if we implement paid parking in the downtown core, we residents would not be able to park in the downtown core. With our resident passes, we would be parking in the outline residential areas. Just some clarity on that. Maybe a little more certainty on what we intend to do with RV parking. Are they still permitted to park downtown at that? Two hour spot that would be paid parking, or are we planning to redirect RVs to an intended designated RV parking lot? And then also, if the two hour paid parking is at a price, is the lot then free? Or are the lots and being encouraged thus making them free? Or are we going to price the lots at, say, $1 an hour and the on-street parking at, say, $2 an hour to incentivize the lots? But still achieve some revenue generation from those areas.
Mayor Ireland.
So my thought, and this is what makes this a pilot project, is that we we start with. Less and study the results and then maybe move to more. So my proposal, and I think my motion, I will accept what Mr. Given has said, and I will go back to where I started, which is. The concept of paid parking where it is now two hour parking. I would leave it at the same hours that we have, and I appreciate that that will have an effect on revenue projections. But from my perspective, the primary goal of this is. Asset management, not revenue generation, and the revenue generation will be. A welcome. Byproduct, but it, it, from my perspective, it is not the goal, and let's just start with something and we can start to study, and so. We have a defined area. We already have the two hour parking signs up. We know what we're talking about. After a year of study, we might decide that it should be expanded further. And it may then be also expanded to parking lots. I would say that for now, let's focus on. Where it is two hour parking, leave the rest alone. There is already encouragement for RVs to go across to the RV parking lot. One of the things I don't know, because we need some technical expertise is. I guess we have to create stalls somehow, and so if an RV is too big for the stall that's created. I think automatically if they choose to park downtown in two hour parking, they will be taking up. More than one stall, so I guess they would be paying more. And that would be a disincentive, and that would would drive them elsewhere. With respect to resident passes. My thought, at least in in making the motion, is that. If we are going to have paid parking, residents are entitled to use that parking, but they pay for it. They don't get a free pass for the paid parking. But I think we should have permitted parking so that if you take, for example, the 600 block of. Of Geeky Street, which is all residential units, but it's only a block removed from Patricia Street. I think we can anticipate that there will be a lot of visitors want to park there, and I think that that should be restricted parking. Residents should be able to park there, be left alone because they have a pass on their car and. And visitors should not be entitled to park there. The same would apply on the 700 block of Patricia and and other blocks. But my proposal is not that residents get free parking in the paid parking, otherwise they could come downtown and park for the day and. That does not, I think, lend to what I hope will be. More rapid turnover for the betterment of businesses who rely on more rapid turnover to generate income. And I I hope that I've answered those questions, Counselor McGrath.
Counselor Butler, do I see your hand?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Ireland, for taking us down this road. I'm, I'm. In support of what we're talking about. To some of the suggestions that have come up, I think I agree that simply looking at the areas already posted for two hours. Makes it simple and clean and easy, and we can in further future phases look at nuancing that. I think that I am a little concerned about the. Being clear on what we mean with respect to RVs. I, I think maybe we would like to ask. Administration to come back and recommend on that. It might be the better option to simply. Administration to come back and recommend on that. It might be the better option to simply not allow RV parking in the areas where we're having paid parking. I, I think it could prove very difficult and lead to. Yeah, just really difficult situations where somebody's gonna park an RV, it's gonna take up two spaces. The fact is that I think some of these. I don't know what you call them, that not, they're not meters where where you pay by phone, pay by credit card. I think they are generally based on per vehicle and and they don't always even have stalls. So I don't know that marking stalls and then expecting RVers to understand that they have to pay for two stalls would really work. And maybe we need to sort of bite the bullet on that. It is a pretty restricted area downtown that we would be applying paid parking to. And maybe we have to post them with no oversized vehicle parking. There, we're leaving tons of other parking fairly nearby for those to park in if we're not going to regulate. The rest of Canot, for for example. So that might be a clear, cleaner solution. But I'm happy with the direction. I'm a little unconvinced about such short timeframes. I, I don't know if notionally, if it makes sense, if we're gonna charge parking downtown. But then not charge over the dinner hour because we don't want to charge people who are having dinner. I, I, I don't know why we wouldn't extend it to a little longer. But I don't feel very strongly about it, either way. I want to say one more thing about the pilot nature of this project. I have a feeling I really looked at the numbers provided by administration on option two. And I think that. If we go this route, we will likely find there is a very little positive economic impact of this small project. But that's just fine if we accept that in its first year. I expect that we will not see significant positive economic impact until and unless the program was expanded out to include some other areas of town. And that's probably where we'll start to see real economic impact if it applies to more of Canot and to some of the, some or all of the. Parking lots. But as Mayor Ireland pointed out, that's really not our first concern at this point. It's to have a successful outcome where we might gain information about the potentials of future expansions. So I mentioned that because several residents have pointed out to me that if we implement paid parking. And spend all the income administering paid parking. Then it's a net zero gain for the community and why have we bothered? And that's a pretty good point, and that may be the way our pilot looks. But I think it would be easier to expand the program out in future to see better revenue income than it would be. If we piloted it based on option one. Where I'm not sure we would have gained much information about how successful we could be by applying paid parking to the downtown core. So overall, I'm in favor of this option.
Counselor Geno?
I appreciate the comments that have been made by Counselor Butler and Mayor Ireland. And as Counselor Butler stated, very simple, no oversized vehicles allowed to park in the downtown core. So whether they be delivery trucks or motorhomes or whatever, no oversized vehicle. I, I, I like that direction. Thank you.
Counselor Demoda?
Sorry if I was, if my mic was on earlier, I'm not sure if I was disrupting Counselor Butler's, okay. Okay, thank you. I think we already have a bylaw for oversized vehicles in the downtown core. So that would take care of that automatically. There is, there is a length limit on there for sure.
So Mayor Ireland, you have made a motion that we're going to implement paid parking in the downtown core from Hazel to Pyramid, where the current two hour parking is in effect. That no RV parking will be allowed in the downtown core. They can go to parking lots and outside that area. And that we are going to go from nine AM to five PM as the current timeline. Or do we want to extend that from five PM to seven PM?
My motion is to leave that alone, that, in in my view, and this is only my opinion. That is something that we can learn from studying through the pilot project and change that later.
Okay, so it's going to be from nine AM to five PM? And we are going to run this program from May to the end of October or right for the year?
I think the proposal was May third to September thirtieth, if the May third start date can be achieved and maybe it can't.
So can I call that motion?
Well, if 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 I may, though, Deputy Mayor Keller, I, I, I think it is absolutely critical to the motion. That it incorporate the comments I made about. Parking permits and prohibited parking on it on adjacent streets and we'll have to work out the details of that. But I I do want to recognize that we have to do something for residents as residents and protect parking in front of residential homes for for their use. So that's, from my perspective, a critical element of the motion.
I agree, and I apologize for that. Before I call the motion, Counselor Butler? Or Counselor Demoda?
Yeah. I'm, I would, I'm not gonna be in favor if the cutoff is is five o'clock, because I'm not looking at it for maximizing revenue in that sense. For me, it's just, it's the continual demand on parking and I don't want to deter people from, you know, going downtown for dinner and and. But things like that, but I've personally seen the, the effects of of those hours during that time. And and I still think a twelve hour window is is our best approach for for parking downtown in peak season.
Counselor Butler?
Well, I wanted to make the point that I I'm in favor of everything that Mayor Ireland has put in the table in terms of it coming back to a future regular meeting. So I think that what we're doing here is. Or what we want to do is direct administration to bring a proposal back at a regular meeting, and then we would at that time vote on that. And I just had the thought that around the idea of length of time, it would provide us then with that opportunity. Also with a little more time for some discussion in the community prior to that, it would allow us to allow any council to propose an amendment to simply change the timeframe. We could vote in favor or against that amendment and then come back to the main motion and we might find good council-wide consensus that way. So I think what we're doing is asking, is saying that this will come back at a regular meeting. And that will still give us an opportunity to dot i's and cross t's before we pass the final motion.
Counselor McGrath?
I'm not convinced yet that I will vote in favor of this motion when it comes to a council regular motion. Or regular meeting, sorry, by motion, but I am supportive of bringing this discussion back to a regular council meeting for further debate.
Mr. Given?
Yeah, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, just for for recording secretary. If we can do our best attempt before you call the motion to have the mover clearly define the specific items in that. Because, you know, there is a bit of, you know, just just now, some discussion even about, well. This should come to a council meeting. So are we making a recommendation to council? Are we giving direction to administration to implement? And I would, you know, just mention my comments earlier about timelines of ordering equipment, advertising, training staff. So there are, there are some timelines, and so that is, that's an important point. And my, my bigger point there is to say that if as best as possible, the mover could say, I move that committee of the whole. Either direct administration or refer to council and then specifically itemize, you know, sort of a bullet point list of the, the actions, I guess, that are that are intended.
Mayor Ireland?
If I might prevail upon you Deputy Mayor Keller-Herempe to give me two minutes to write out a motion, I will do that and that's, I think, the only way I'm going to achieve clarity. If you can just give me a couple of moments.
Mr. Given, is there, just, I'm just gonna jump ahead here. We have an inclusion workshop at one o'clock today. Am I correct?
I believe that maybe at one thirty.
One thirty? Okay.
I'll have to look to be, oh, I'm sorry, it is in my calendar at one PM.
So I'm going to ask you, because we have still several items on the agenda, that I will ask council to defer in order for us to make this workshop at one o'clock. Is there anything pressing on here that you think we need to deal with today?
Yes, absolutely. The most pressing item would be the sidewalk seating fee amendment. I appreciate that that is one that is likely to elicit some discussion, but it is a pressing item in that. The businesses that are looking to participate in that program need some clarity. This is the only item with respect to that program that will need to come forward to council. All the rest in terms of the management of the program can be handled under the existing bylaw, but the fee cannot be changed by administration. And so that one, I would just does need to be dealt with today.
Thank you. Or is there an appetite from council to return to the committee of the whole if I was to break maybe the whole for the workshop and return to the committee of the whole at three thirty? How does council feel? Counselor McGrath?
Just speaking personally, that I do have to leave out of town at the conclusion of the meeting at three thirty, that ends at three thirty.
Mr. Given, would these items come back on two weeks from now on our council meeting agenda, or would they come back on the committee of the whole agenda on April eleventh, probably?
They would. So the items that follow in our agenda today, if council, a committee makes a recommendation, it would come to the next regular council meeting, which I believe is the sixth.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Geno?
While Mayor Ireland is working on his motion, I just want to command and thank council for the work that was done on this item here. It appeared halfway through that we were gonna go nowhere, as we're all over the place, and then we started to narrow it down. And I think we've done some very good work. We've, I, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Given, but I think we've provided you, or we will be providing you with a good sense of direction about this subject. And let's not forget that it is work in progress. And it's gonna be improved on, made better in future. Thank you.
Counselor Butler?
I just wondered about, I mean, we are gonna run out of time. Perhaps we have to defer the RFD on commercial use of public space until our next regular meeting. The decision was not going to be until the next regular meeting anyway. While it's not something that we do regularly, we always can, for the purposes of that discussion, we can always. I'm forgetting the technical term, but we can move into committee. If we need to, in that meeting, to have a more robust discussion of that, we can allow ourselves to discuss that. RFD without actually having motion on the table if we want to do that, but I just don't see how we're gonna have that conversation today and prepare ourselves for the sixth. And I also wanted to mention that the other item, which was mine, absolutely can be deferred. There's no particular urgency to that one.
Thank you, Counselor Butler. Counselor Demoda?
Well, while the mayor. Oh, sorry. While the, while the mayor is drafting his thing, I didn't want to jump to the next agenda item. But maybe just a question for. For Mr. Given while we're waiting on the the public use of the product, the commercial use of public space. I've just had people asking me if the plan is to go ahead or if if we're gonna have the the seating on the streets is the same as last year, regardless of what the fees might be and things like that is. So the the options now is to have what we had last year and or boardwalks, or is everything going towards boardwalks?
So Counselor Demoda. The intent is A to allow businesses to operate under the pilot program as approved last year. And as reviewed by PDAC. PDAC did provide some guidance on issues that they wanted to see addressed. And so administration is making an effort to incorporate those issues that PDAC wanted to see addressed in terms of accessibility, safety and aesthetics. And I think, you know, generally the community has the same concerns. So administration is working to address those. The approach that we're taking is what I would call an outcomes-based approach. Where rather than describing the very specific ways to achieve something, we are saying what we want the businesses to achieve in terms of clear, unimpeded pedestrian zone. You know, not creating hazards or barriers for persons with limited mobility. Maintaining the aesthetic character of Jasper, you know, we're describing those outcomes. And then leaving it to the proponents to define how they would achieve those outcomes. So, you know, rather than being overly prescriptive and damaging the ability of people who may have a unique solution from from being innovative in that way. We are describing the outcomes that we need to see in order to be able to approve somebody's permit. But again, you know, we can do that within the scope of administrative authority within, excuse me, within the bylaw.
And the information's in that package and and I appreciate it, but thank you for condensing it. Make it, making it understand.
Thank you, Counselor. Mayor Ireland?
Thank you. I I can provide the written text to administration later, but the motion that I have then is this, that committee of the whole direct administration to return to council on April sixth with a plan based on alternative number two presented today to proceed with a paid parking pilot project in the area now subject to two hour parking and for the same posted hours. For the period commencing May third or so soon thereafter, as may be practical. And ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Coupled with a parking permit system for residents in areas of adjacent residential housing. And subject to existing bylaws regarding the prohibition of RV parking in the downtown core.
Any comments before I called question? All in favor? The whole, all right. Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Mr. Given, seeing that it is twelve fifty five, I'm going to ask for a motion to defer the rest of the items. Eight point five, eight point six, nine point one. Eleven point one. And screen camera item thirteen point one are on the agenda till the next meeting of April sixth. May I have a motion from somebody? Customer bro, all in favor? Okay, Counselor Butler? I can't hear you, Counselor Butler.
Well, I haven't started speaking yet. I was, I was just going to point out that this item, commercial use of public space coming before us today is also a question of notice. And I was gonna suggest that. I, I, I don't want us to be caught by our own procedures and unable to make a decision next week. I was gonna suggest that we. I was going to suggest that we receive that for information or something like that on this agenda. So it is very clear that we do intend to move forward, consider the matter and make a decision. Do notice having been given. So if that's an idea that Mr. Given constantly thinks is a good one, I would make that move.
So to be very brief, committee recommending it to council still allows council to make its own decisions when it reviews it. So I, I think the committee recommend council approach that we've, that is actually contained in the report, is exactly in alignment with what Counselor Butler is suggesting. The difference being that receive for information means we're taking this and not doing anything with it. Committee recommending it forward to council for discussion and debate is, is a separate, you know, would get that action that you're looking for. And, and still allow council members to make up their own minds at the council table, whether they wish to move forward or not.
So the motion on the table by Counselor Butler?
I think I'm moving the committee refer this to council for a decision on April 6th.
All in favor? Carried. Now, do I need a motion to defer the rest to the April 6th meeting? Nick, can I have a motion to put the rest of the items over to April 6th meeting? Counselor McGraw, all in favor? Carried. Um, carried. Can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting so that we can attend the workshop in five minutes? Counselor McGraw? Carried. I would like to thank the public.
Great job on, uh, great job on chairing the meeting today. Fantastic work.
What you really said is, Counselor Demoda, you ran over again, Counselor.
No, I think, you know what? With all that was considered today, you did a great, great job. The length, it probably could have gone longer if you weren't chairing. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Helen.
I'm known for long meetings.
Thank, thank you, Helen.
Thank you. Thank you to the public. Thank you, residents, for joining us. And I will see everybody else soon in the workshop.
Thanks, everyone. See you soon.